I'd like to call the order, the Westmont Village Board meeting of August 2nd, 2018, at 6:00 PM, and ask Clerk Simsky for a roll call.
Mayor Gunther?
Here.
The clerks here, Trustee Addington?
Here.
Trustee Barker?
Here.
Trustee Barry?
Here.
Trustee Guzal?
Here.
Trustee Little?
Here.
Trustee Nero?
Here.
Manager May?
Here.
Attorney Zemanak?
Here.
Finance Director Parker?
Here.
Would everybody please rise and join in a pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening and welcome. The first item is the open forum. Again, I think Chief, Deputy Chief mentioned, if your item's on the agenda, you'll have an opportunity to discuss with us. And I've got two requests, so Chief, that's the two I have. So I'm gonna call these individuals up, and they have an opportunity to address the board. And I've got William Sad from 44 East Richmond Street.
That's right. Over here.
Yeah.
Well, I've lived here for 69 years, born and raised on Richmond Street. And over my sixty-some years of driving, I've never experienced more problems with parking and driving east and west on Richmond Street. Ever since they put the new street in, which by the way is only nine months, maybe 10 months old, there's a crack in it, runs all the way from the north side to the south side. And that's poor construction. But my problem is parking. Ever since they put the new parking stripes in, showing you where to park, they stick two and a half feet past the car, or two to two and a half feet past the car. Cars are seven and a half, the lines are nine, so a foot and a half. For some reason, people can't get it in their minds that there's 18 more feet of road where you can drive two cars. You see that line, and you don't want to get over onto the south side or the north side of Richmond Street. So it's a bottleneck. And it's never had that problem when they had a four-foot line. But ever since they went to the nine-foot line, I don't know if it's, people just don't realize how wide a car is, but it's just a bottleneck. And the second thing I wanted to talk about was, have there ever been any cost issues about maybe trying to put a east platform for eastbound trains to stop east of the tracks, extending past-bail hardware as far as you've got west on this side? Seems like when a train comes going west, as soon as they pass the arms, the guardrails, well, the guardrail will come down, or go up, I mean, and traffic can continue to move, north and south. But when an eastbound train's going, they stop right at the street there, and it takes anywhere from three to four and a half minutes in the morning after the arm goes down for traffic to continue to move. And traffic is be all the way backed up past 55th Street. So it's just something, maybe they can look at a cost thing, maybe Burlington Railroad can maybe kick in something. Maybe it's not possible, but it's just a thought to maybe clear up some of the traffic going up and down. And that's all I had to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I've got a second request from Ray DeJard?
No, John.
That's what I was gonna say. You give your address and...
I'm not sure if I'm on the agenda, is?
No, you're not. No, no.
Okay. I had called the, I was gone for a couple of weeks, and I came back and found I had vandalism. Someone had taken an outside spigot on my house as either punishment, or a practical joke, or kids screwing around, and put it on. And I was lucky that while we were gone two weeks, it must not have been on the entire two weeks. But I did call the police department, reported the vandalism. And he came out, and the officer told me to call the village water department, which I did. And the people there were real nice. They estimated that the, well, they didn't actually estimate, they said I used more than 60,000 gallons of water, and my cost for that was gonna be over $600 in extra payments than what I normally would've done. So I asked the village water department, and I was a longtime resident, I understand that that water was used on my property, and I have control of my property, and I should be held responsible for that, but I'm on fixed income. And to have me bear that entire burden without insurance for that kind of thing as somebody's vandalism, I asked the village water department if at least Westmont could, because I know Westmont pays for water, if at least they could waive any fees or markups on that. And that I talked to Mr. Parker in finance about, and I don't know, are you here tonight?
Yes.
Oh, hi, hi, I'm glad to meet you.
Yes.
But again, they were all very sympathetic, and they were very helpful, and I was just wondering if that could be waived. And he said he was going to address that with the board. That's all I had.
And we had a committee meeting prior to this, and I'll let Trustee Little, who's the chair of that committee, just to give you some additional information.
Okay. And if I could, I guess not only Westmont had a couple of cases of that type of vandalism recently, but a number of the other, Downers Grove, and I think the people mentioned Claritin Hills did too. And my point to the village folks was that, you know, I understand that there's budgets for you folks, and, you know, water is expensive, but if it's a handful of people that have this kind of thing, and it's less than a handful, I guess, in Westmont, I just ask for that kind of consideration. I mean, if there's 100 people, this goes into something more, that the kids decide to do something more on this, and it becomes 100 people, well, maybe that affects your costs or something, but that's my...
What we determined in our meeting is that because you had a police report filed, and you can produce a copy of that, that we would waive our cost?
Oh, very good. You guys are very...
Our additional cost for you.
Thank you very much. Do you want a copy of that police report?
We were able to access it through the police department. So we've got it, we'll make that adjustment on your account.
Thanks a lot, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Oh, by the way, your folks are real nice, because they even took that 600 and some dollars and spent it over a number of months. Then that really helps someone...
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Any more, any open forum requests before I close it?
Believe it.
All right, open forum is closed, moving on to reports. And I'd ask, is Larry McIntyre here? No, here he is. I'm gonna ask him...
He's making an entrance.
...to give us an update on the Sister City program.
Thank you, Mayor and Village Board. Prior to this meeting, Trustee Little's admin committee meeting, we provided a complete update with the most recent visit from Hinsu County during the month of July, but we're already busy planning our upcoming activities. And in fact, from this most recent trip, there's already been an invitation from Magistrate Chu to send a delegation back to Hinsu County at their expense, all for the purpose of economic development. So we're looking forward to that opportunity, fleshing out all the details with that. And then this fall, in the month of November, once again, we're gonna have the student exchange program. So a lot of exciting things continuing from Sister City program.
Thank you. Moving on, Clerk Simsky.
I just want to remind everybody that this weekend, August 3rd, 4th, and 5th, is the citywide garage, community garage sale. So there's a lot involved, so just get out there and look at all the garage sale stuff. And then I'd like to ask Deputy Chief Bruin to come up and talk to us about National Night Out tonight, going on at the...
It's actually going on right now. Started about 5:00, we're gonna go to about 8:30. We have squad, SWAT truck, we got a bounce house going, we got 7-11s up there with ICs, doing free dog tagging, vet checks. We have different vendors so far as like YWCA, NAMI, People's Resource Center's up there tonight, Park District, wanna go place some bags with them, they brought their bags game out. So they'll be up there for another couple hours, hopefully this will wrap up, we'll get down there, so...
Thank you, Brian. We appreciate that. And turn off your TVs and go out there to cruise the night. Get your dog tagged, and all these wonderful things they're doing for everybody tonight.
Trustee, Trustee Nero.
Thank you, Mayor. Just two quick items. Our next Public Works Committee meeting is Thursday, August 30th, and I just wanted to highlight and recap last week's Public Works Truck Night was a big success, although I wasn't there. Public Works Director Ramsey said it was, went off without a hitch, and it was very widely attended, and everybody really enjoyed it. So thanks for all their help in putting that together. It's a great community event. And that's all I have, sir.
All right, Trustee Little.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a number of items that I wanted to discuss. One is the recap of the Administration Finance Committee meeting this afternoon. Two items that were discussed were excess water abuse due to vandalism, and then a follow-up with recap of the Sister City program, all of our visitors from Hinsu County, Taiwan, which was very informative, and it was really nice to review all that we had done in the last couple of weeks while they were here. So it was very important. Second, I'd like to introduce John Aguzino, who is the President of the Board of Directors for Prostate Center Foundation, I'm sorry, Prostate Cancer Foundation for Chicago. If you could tell us about your walk, you run?
Thank you very much. As you said, I'm involved with the Prostate Cancer Foundation of Chicago. On Friday, May 28th, 2016, I received two phone calls from two doctors. One was our GP, the other one was a urologist. I had gone in for a biopsy, and they called me with the results, and the results weren't good, it was positive. So I'm a prostate cancer survivor, so I'm passionate about this, and it's a very treatable, curable disease, it needs to be caught often. So what does the foundation do? We do free screenings, we do research, and we do community outreach. We actually go out and educate people about prostate cancer and screenings. So what we're having is two events, one of which is the race, which is Sunday, September 9th. You can register at 7:00, it starts at 8:00, and we raise money for the foundation. The second event we have is at Grill 89, and it's on the 22nd of August, it's a wine tasting. So you get to come there, you get to drink some good wine, and have some food, and put some money to a good cause. So those are two events, please support us, it's going to a very, very good cause. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Also, I wanted to remind everyone that the Neighbors Magazine, the new issue is being delivered as we speak, and Larry has a wonderful picture on the cover of this one.
[laughing]
Thank you, Larry. And the next item is Westmont Word. The new issue's been finished and features everything in Westmont with a highlight on some of our new economic development projects.
And just a reminder, this can be found in your public agency, all of your local public agencies right in the entryway, and it's here at Village Hall, it's at Westmont Center, library and such.
Next is Communications. TV production is coming to town. Larry, would you like to talk about that real quick?
Absolutely, thank you. So we're always excited when a movie production or TV production comes to town and wants to work with us, and we've developed a good relationship with the local location scouts. They know that Westmont is a film-friendly community, and so in the middle of August, they're gonna be on East 57th Street for a period of about one week to shoot a program called Garage Squad. And that's a program in which they do a refurbishing of a classic car, and so we're looking forward to hosting them again. There's no request from them to the village, so it's more of an awareness thing.
Thank you. Cruise nights and street fair, obviously, we've got one going on right now, and we want to encourage everyone to come out. We have a lot of activities and fun things going on. We also had the Taste of Westmont. And there's a community survey that I encourage everyone to go on to our website and pull off and answer. It's very important to the Special Events Corporation to make certain that we are doing our part to support the people, and we want to make sure that we've entertained all of your ideas and suggestions. So if you'd fill out that survey, greatly appreciated. We also have a Muddy Waters exhibit and Eddie Clearwater exhibit. Larry, would you like to take the lead on that one?
Thank you. Yes, as I had reported at the previous meeting, we're working with DuPage County Museum to have special presentations at their museum using our artifacts from our Muddy Waters Museum. So we met with their curator this past week, and they'll probably be taking about a total of 20 artifacts from our museum and putting them on display starting mid-September, and they'll be there for about a year.
Great. And then one last item on your screen in front of you is a photo taken by Jenny Babiar of the Double Rainbow over Westmont. So, thank you. That's all I have, Mayor.
Well, the only thing I'd ask you, what's next Thursday night?
Oh, my gosh, Fire Truck Night, and we have a very special float that's gonna appear at the very end of the parade afterward. So that's a really big night, everybody's going to enjoy it, and the kids all love coming out to that one, so please come out.
Trustee Barker.
Thank you, Mayor. Two things this evening. Environmental Improvement Committee will meet next Monday night at 6:00 PM at the library, and I just wanted to give them a pat on the back. Last week, we were out at the street fair with the live bees, they brought out some bees from Richmond Education Gardens and Apiary, and we had constant activity at the booth with the kids and the adults. And we, you know, we were surveying them, at least trying to find out if they were local residents, and the Westmont residents really support this, we're happy to generate more publicity and bring this information to the public. So we made a vow last Saturday to come back to another street fair in a couple of weeks and do the same thing. We have a person that has volunteered to wear our bee costume, and she spent four hours in that bee costume, walking up and down the street, didn't sit down once, didn't drink any water. I was starting to get worried about her, but great volunteers, great night, but there's tremendous interest in that project over there, so we're very happy about that. And then I just wanted to remind everybody that Westmont First will meet again on August 20th at 6:00 PM at the library. So we have our, we took a couple of months off for the summer, and we'll meet again on August 1st at, or August 20th at 6:00 PM, and start to wrap that back up again as we think of Westmont First. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Addington.
Couple things, Mayor, thank you. First one is that long as we're talking about cruising nights, in two weeks, on the 16th, the Lions Club will have both the hearing bus and the eye screening buses. They'll be at Irving and Quincy, and again, those are free to have your hearing tested. As I always say, bring your husbands, because then you can find out whether it's real or selective hearing loss. And of course, the eye tests that are done, the eye screenings that are done are determined whether or not they see any, any damage from any diseases, or for instance, like diabetic retinopathy. And again, those are free, and you usually get your test results either that night or very quickly, and so come out and join the Lions, and they're doing their service.
August 16th, you said, Jim?
Yeah, August the 16th. And then the other thing is, we got two big projects that have been going on now for all summer on Argent Avenue, both Porsche and BMW, and we hope that the Porsche dealership development will be completed hopefully by sometime here at the end of the month of August, and that'll be a real positive. I think everyone knows that the Nattatorium was approved, they're moving forward, they still need the, some help in getting some permits through some of the other governmental bodies, like the county and things like that, but hopefully that'll come shortly, and that'll become a big reality. So a lot of good things happening in town, a lot of new projects, 63rd Street, I think by now a lot of people know about that, and it keeps moving forward, and we hope we keep doing things that will improve the community. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Trustee Guzal.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple things, our next Public Safety Committee meeting will be Thursday, August 16th, 4:30 in this room, everyone is invited to attend. As it's been brought up, Fire Truck Night is next Thursday night, so come on out, and it'll be a great evening. In keeping with the fire department theme this evening, the fire department will be celebrating its 95th anniversary celebration. The committee continues to promote the open house on Saturday, October 13th, 1:00 to 3:00 at the Headquarters Station on South Cass. Members are still sending out or handing out Save the Day cards. Everyone, come on, put it on your calendar, let's get a really good turnout. The fire department only turns 95 ones. And on a very happy note, I would like to wish the clerk a belated happy birthday.
Amen.
And that's all I have, thank you, Mayor.
Trustee Bear.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our next scheduled EDC meeting will be September 5th at 9:00 AM, and we meet right here in the next room over, and always exciting to see what's coming to town, and again, that's September 5th at 9:00 AM. We have a ribbon cutting coming up for Sweet and Savory Spot, and that's scheduled for Friday, August 17th, and that's gonna be at 4:30, and that is at 15 South Cass Avenue. If anyone's interested in attending, please RSVP at westmontchamber.com, and that's all I have tonight, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Moving on, items, we remove the consent agenda. Does anybody want an item removed? Seeing none, I'd ask Manager May to please read.
This evening, on the consent agenda, first item is Village Board Minutes, Board to Consider Approving the Minutes of the Village Board Meeting Held August, well, can't be August 2nd, so it would've been, what was it, July 19th?
Yes.
Is that in the packet?
Yeah.
July 19th, thank you. Next is Finance Ordinance Number 7, in the aggregate amount of $1,254,928.79. Next, our purchase orders. The first, five purchase orders are open purchase orders, these are just purchase orders and covering money for contracts that you've already awarded. First is Austin Tyler Construction, $495,000 for the Burl Oak Water Main construction. Next is Engineering Solutions Team, $119,120 for the Burlington Roslin West End Stormwater Construction Engineering. Third is ESI Consultants, $159,950 for the Stormwater Basin Project at 6101 South Cass. Next is also ESI Consultants for $26,150, but that's for the 2018 MFT Phase 2, which is Design Engineering Services, MFT being motor fuel tax-funded project. And fifth is Christopher B. Burke, $126,272, and that's for all of the constructive, this is the engineering for the 400 block of North Warwick, and that's all the stormwater improvements for all those parcels combined. The next purchase order is Safe Step, $20,512. It says here, concrete sidewalk cutting, but it's the grinding and it's the profiling of the sidewalk for trip hazards. This is also, this is an open purchase order, but the first payment is also on the, on the Finance Ordinance, so you're approving this simultaneously. DuPage Convention and Visitors Bureau, $37,581.94, represents our annual dues, that's also simultaneous approval. And last is the Government Insurance Network, $2220,000. This is, if you all know, but where we've switched our insurance, I don't wanna call it broker, but our, our network, and starting this new one up, up until this last month, we were making payments approved retroactively as part of the Finance Ordinance. So moving forward, this will be, there'll be an annual purchase order, and you'll just be making, we will be making payments off of that across the year. So this is a transitional amount. That brings the total of purchase orders to $3,204,585.94, and therefore, the total of purchase orders and Finance Ordinance Number 7 together is $4,459,514.73. And that concludes the consent agenda, Mayor.
Do I have a motion to approve as presented?
Motion, motion to approve, Nero?
Second, Little?
Motion made in second. On the question. Seeing none, roll call, please.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Guzal?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Trustee Barrett?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Trustee Barrett?
Yes.
Trustee Guzal?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes. Motion passes. We'll move on to new business. A, 206 South Warwick Avenue, setback variance. Board to Consider Ordinance Approving a Zoning Code Variance Request from Brian and Michelle Walsh to Allow for the Construction of a Home Addition Within the Required Front Yard Setback in the R3 Single Family Detached Resident District. And our village planner, Henner Feind, is...
Perfect.
I said it right this time, right? He'll give us more information.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Village Board. So what's before you for consideration tonight is 206 South Warwick Avenue. This is an established single-family home that's probably been there since the 50s, would be my best guess. The owner approached the village for a remodel project on that some time ago, to do a large expansion to the backside of the property, including going up to the second floor, and also had a proposed front yard, front porch on the property. It's an existing Cape Cod, it's a one and a half story, it has no front porch right now. In order to build that porch, it needs to get a, obtain a setback variance. So as it sits right now, the small front entry enclosure is at 23.9 feet from the front yard setback. If this is approved, the new one would be at 21.9, so a difference of two feet, or a variance request of 3.1 feet. 35 feet is the typical setback in our single-family districts. A few years ago, we did amend our code to allow a 25-foot exception for what we call traditional neighborhoods, when it is not a garage and sitting in front of the house. So to some degree, we were encouraging porches to be at the 25-foot setback. What the applicant has done is they have proven that in the neighborhood, there is precedent where there are several other porches that are already closer to the street. This was before the Planning and Zoning Commission on July 11th, and received a unanimous positive recommendation. And as always, I'm available for questions. We do have the applicant here if you have any questions.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve as presented. Mary.
Second, Little?
Motion made in second. Any questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
The public?
Public, oh yeah, I'm sorry.
Sir.
Anybody from the public would like to comment on this?
I got a question.
You gotta come up here, Bill. You're gonna be on camera.
Then I'll leave.
Back in 1996, I wanted to put a porch in the front of my house, and they told me I had a 50-foot setback, which is, I guess, what they usually were. And I got to talking with the building inspector, and he said, according to the books, you can't build a porch, but if you raise it three or four inches off the ground, you can call it a balcony. So it all depends how you word it, you know, if you can get by going a little further and just raising it up off the ground, and call it a balcony rather than a porch. You know, it seems like the building inspector, whoever's in charge of permits, can work with people to get them by some of these variances, so that's all I had to say.
Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Thanks. Anybody else? Seeing none, Rod asks for a roll call, please.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Guzal?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes. Motion passes.
Thank you.
New business B, increase in available Class 4 liquor license. Board to Consider Ordinance Increasing the Number of Available Class 4 Liquor License by 1 for Cafe Ruda, 6551 South Cass Avenue. Deputy Liquor Commissioner Mulling.
Good evening, Mayor and Village Board. Cafe Ruda wishes to serve beer and wine to customers to enhance their dining experience. They have applied for a Class 4 liquor license, which allows for the sale of beer and wine only at the location. A background check has been completed, and Cafe Ruda is eligible to receive a Class 4 license, provided the number of available Class 4 licenses are increased by 1 by the Board to accommodate...
Good evening, Mayor and Village Board. Cafe Ruta wishes to serve beer and wine to customers to enhance their dining experience. They have applied for a Class IV liquor license, which allows for the sale of beer and wine only at the location. A background check has been completed, and Cafe Ruta is eligible to receive a Class IV license, provided the number of available Class IV licenses are increased by one by the board to accommodate the request. With me is owner of Cafe Ruta, Loretta, and Loretta is the sole owner of the business. I, she's been, we've been in contact for probably a couple of years. She was interested in a liquor license a few years ago, but just recently did recent remodeling to her business. And for those who haven't been down there, you need to get down there. It's very, very nice, and I hear the food's outstanding, so I want to be a customer soon. However, she's looking just to enhance alcohol, just enhance her diner's experience, beer and wine only. She may have some entertainment, but usually for closed parties, birthday parties or closed parties are popular. And, and I asked her during our background, is she interested in video gaming? And the answer was no, not at this time. She's just interested in serving good food. So with that, my background showed nothing that would prevent her from, and her company, from getting the liquor license. And at that, I'll let Loretta, maybe kind of shy, but she'll tell you a little bit about the restaurant.
First, I'm sorry, I'm probably not very well speaking English, but I try and explain for you. It's, we're serving Lithuanian food, European cuisine. It's lots of potato dishes, lots of smoked sausages, sauerkraut, kugelis, potato pancake. It's very hard, heavy, and fat food.
That's why I'm going.
Yes. And Lithuania is a beer country. And our customer, about around 70%, it's Lithuanian, or European, you know, Polish, Russian sometimes. And they always asking about a glass of wine or a glass of beer. And we cannot give them. And we, and business now is around seven year. Last year, we did a remodeling. We changed furniture, painted up walls, new, new counter, everything almost new. But we need just a glass of wine or beer.
What's your hours?
By me?
Your hours that you're open?
Now, we open at 11 till 7:00. Because after 7:00, you know, people, if they want a glass of wine, they're going in others, other restaurants. If we got them, I think so, and we can start at 11 till 8:00. On Fridays, a little bit longer, probably till 9:00. On Saturdays, till 9:00 or 10:00.
Thank you.
That's it.
Just sort of knows Cafe Ruta is located in the Falcon Plaza.
Falcon Plaza.
Falcon Drive and Cass, around the north part of the plaza, near Nancy's Pizza and near the daycare center.
Yes. Cleaning and Nancy's Pizza and Chinese.
Chinese, yes.
And I know that my deputy clerk, Alicia, and Jenny Babanac ate there today, and they both came back raving about the food. And so, I know Alicia's eaten there quite a few times.
I have to apologize. I have yet to be there, but I have heard from Lithuanian friends that it is the best place to go around here. They said, always go to the one in Westmont, so I have to get there.
And we have some probably three Lithuanian restaurants around Chicago area here. And when we start, it was the worst, because we bought a business from other people and left the same name, Ruta. And you know, two year, two year, we work very hard. We have to wake up everything. And now, we are the best.
How many seats do they have, Tom?
It's at least 40.
Are you planning on serving any Lithuanian beer?
One time.
Okay. Okay.
And then, you know, we'll see. Some maybe Coronas, like young people.
And what's the ice cream you have?
Uh, Dado.
Yeah.
Lithuanian ice cream, yes. Lots of Lithuanian stuffs. Yeah. Bread, we have some bread from Lithuania. We have some cookies from Lithuania, sausages from Lithuania, you know. Okay. Always welcome.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve as presented, Barry.
Second, Nero.
Motion made in second. Anybody have a comment from the audience? Any board member? I think we got it covered, then I'd ask for a roll call, please.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Trustee Guzal?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Always welcome in Ruta.
Thank you.
New business C. 41 North Cass Craft Brewery Tavern Special Use, Scallywag. Board to consider ordinance approving the following requests from ATG Trust, number 96-311, to allow for the operation of a craft brewery tavern in the B1 limited business district. One, a special use permit to allow a craft brewery tavern. Two, a variance to permit a tavern within the required 1,000-feet separation from a school. Three, a variance to reduce the total required number of parking spaces. And four, development permit. And we do have village planner Henner Feind. I'm going to say it right again.
Absolutely. Thank you again, Mr. Mayor and the Village Board. I think every case we have tonight, I'm going to have more to say, so. 41 North Cass, so this is the, what used to be Irving's, I guess his second loca, his second location when he moved over there. So it's an established building on a site that is fully developed. So there is a commercial building there. There is a, what used to be a single-family house that I think has a couple of units in it now. And then there is a two-car garage at the rear of the building. So the actual site is fully developed with buildings. There is no parking that's on-site. So what's before you is, it's a B1 district. It is the TIFs district, is what we actually in zoning classification consider a tavern. So I think it was probably a month or two ago, it was considered for a new type of class of liquor license for a craft brewery tavern. So this is a unique tavern and different from the two taverns we have existing in town, in that this is a business that wishes to brew their beer on-site and serve what they brew on-site. This is different than what we would consider a microbrewery, which the intent, we do allow microbreweries in the B2 district. The intent there is that you produce to export, and it is different than a brew pub, which is also permitted in the B2 district, which includes basically a restaurant element. So there is no food that is being served, although this does allow for food to be brought in, which is very popular in some of the, the other breweries, particularly in the downtown breweries. That special use carries a requirement of being 1,000 feet away from a school. This is only 800 feet away from the school, so there's an accompanying variance that is being requested for the 200 feet, and it's to J.T. Manning School. We don't have a, a measurement method, so it is the, the straightest line between the two. If you actually had to walk it, it would be a little over 1,000 square feet, so the assumption is that you're jumping over everyone's fences to get to there. It's 800 feet away. Also, there is a variance to the total, uh, number of required parking spaces. So this is a more intensive use on the property. The previous uses on the property were all retail-based. They required four parking spaces. Like I said, there are, is no parking on-site. Those four spaces are grandfathered in based on the original uses that were there. This new use requires 13 spaces based on the number of seats. I think the number of seats is at 38 seats is what's anticipated. So basically backing out the four requires a variance of nine spaces. There are, there is a municipal lot just north of this. There are on-site street parking that's on, very close by as well. And then there is the development permit, so any businesses that's going into the downtown requires a, a development permit. This did get, get a six-to-one vote at the July 11th meeting. The, the one negative vote was, was primarily based on Fire Department requirements. So as a courtesy, we do contact the Fire Department. They do issue comments on the project, mostly because when you're doing a change of use or you're proposing renovations in existing buildings, does it trigger something? So in this case, the applicant has to do new bathrooms that require, accommodate accessibility standards, move some back doors. It does require sprinklers in order to do that. At the time, it was more of a notification that you need to be aware that there's a substantial cost to move this into the space. I do have the applicant here. I think he does want to come up and just kind of give a, a brief overview of what he's determined in that measure. And as always, I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening.
How are you? So I won't take up much of your time, just wanted to discuss in relation to the fire prevention memo that's been mentioned. If we can hit the screen?
Give me a second.
Eric? The main points were the egress points. We didn't have enough. We've had those drawn in already. There is a structural assessment that's been done. We'll be doing some shoring so that nothing falls through the floor, especially the, you know, delicious beer. And then, the fire detection system needs to be upgraded, and we've accepted a vendor bid to do so. And then, one hour fire rating on everything coming up from the basement, really. And that's, that's all in our plan. And then, of course, there's the big sprinklers, which is, which is our only open point. Since the Planning and Zoning Committee meeting, we've obtained a quote for the internal portion of the sprinklers, so the actual dependents and things inside. We're still waiting for the quote to come back for the connection to the street. Unfortunately, it has to go across the street, either Cass or Irving. Our water connection is actually on Cass, so it would most likely be Cass. That's going to be the biggest sticking point at this point. So, but once we have that, then we'll set up a meeting with the Fire Department and discuss with them, make sure that everybody's on the same page as to what, what needs to be done. But we're fully aware of the, the cost involved here. I also wanted to make the point, and this was made in the other meeting as well, that we can't open our doors unless the Fire Department says we can. Even if everybody else is on board, Fire Department is the final sticking point. So we're absolutely going to be doing exactly what we need to do, because we want to get open. Then the only other issue that was brought up during that meeting was the adjacent residential building. They had, the residents had some concerns related to things like smells. We're, we're working with them to mitigate, make sure that it's, we're not going to disturb them. Some of the things, we, we generally won't be doing anything that's causing any smells outside of standard working hours, so like 9:00 to 5:00. And then we'll, for venting, we'll try to vent more towards Cass, so that it's entering the business district opposed to the residential area. And those smells do dissipate quickly, so it's not, so. Welcome any questions, if anyone has any?
Would you start, you know, and take advantage, would you introduce yourself?
Oh, sorry. I'm Dan Burr. I'm one of the owners of Scallywag Brewing, or prospective owners, hopeful, hopeful owners.
Thank you.
Should we get approved?
Is there anybody in the audience that has a question or comment about this agenda item? If not, I entertain a motion to approve as Rhett.
Motion to approve, Nero?
Second, Guzal.
Motion made, and I second it to approve. And on to question. Trustee Addington.
And I know I'm jumping ahead. This is really more to let them get started, but will you be planning on doing any package sales of your beer?
We'll start with on-demand to-go. We'll, due to the train, we've actually settled on receivable crawlers, is what they're called, tin cans with a cap. The idea is that, get a crawler, get on the train. It's legal to drink it on the train. Go down to Alter, get one from them, and come back. Eventually, there will be some small amount of packaged goods. There's actually a limitation, I believe, in the license as to how much we have. I'll have to clarify that with Mr. Mar. But it would be, it would be very small.
This is a new classification of license, and we're not even addressing that at this point until he...
I'd ask that he'd open, I would imagine.
So...
Though we talked about doing the new classification.
The new class of license was already created, approved by the board. I don't know that the applicant, the applicant did not formally apply for that liquor license, so I think he was taking care of getting the license created, taking care of his zoning development issues.
Yes.
Oh, he does have it.
I'm currently doing the background phase of their application. He applied.
Well, applied. We don't have it yet, right.
I'm sorry, July 30.
All right.
Any additional question? Trustee Barker?
This is probably for staff. Joe, if you would. Did we have any notification that the school district would object to this?
I have not received any notification from the school district.
And then the other one is the, the issue with venting and the smells. Is that a real concern?
I will let the applicant speak to that.
He's shaking his head behind you, but I want to know what our staff thinks about that.
I'm biased, because I used to work in a brew pub. The smell tends to be kind of the smell of baking bread. It's the yeast.
Yeast.
Some people love it, some people don't. It is something that occurs only when you're doing, and I don't want to overspeak. I think when you're mashing it, which is basically you're, you're boiling it with the barley, it does dissipate quickly. I did speak with the applicant after the meeting and said, well, can you look at either venting it towards Irving or venting it towards Cass? And it seems like he says he's, he's looked into a, a better venting method. I can tell you that Miss in Legends, I've never driven by and smelled anything. I don't know if anyone else has ever tried to do that, but staff does not feel that it is something that would be significant.
Thank you.
So Joe, just to clarify on what, have you or staff or anyone contacted 201 or Manning and, and got their feedback, or you just haven't heard from them?
No, we did not contact the school district specifically.
Okay.
They are, they are outside of the, the 250-foot notification ring that is required.
Because I question if, if we shouldn't table that. I don't know if this is going to be separate motions or not, but until, until we talk to 201 or the Manning staff to see what, what their feelings are on it.
I would point out that the Illinois Liquor Code has a 100-foot distance separation between an establishment that sells alcohol, either on or off-premises consumption, and a school. So this is a zoning code requirement of 1,000 feet for taverns. Just to let you know, there are two separate standards.
And I think what Joe described is if you go straight through properties, it'd be 800 feet, but if you walk on a sidewalk, it's over 1,000.
And I get that from the, from the past brew pub guy, you know? But, but how does the school feel about it, is, is I guess my, my concern and my question.
And you are correct. We did not contact them separately. We did not ask the applicant to contact them separately.
I'm not going to speak for them, but whether it's through, so the superintendent is also the chamber president, and they're, I can assure you, they're familiar that this is being proposed. So they, they have an opportunity to reach out, but to answer your question, we did not ask the drunk.
You're assuring me that they're aware of it.
Yeah.
That's what you said. You just, you said you're assuring me that they're aware of it, so. Because if, what if they do have a problem with it, and, and we didn't contact them, I guess, you know? Because it's a school.
Any other?
Yeah, I, I guess I'd like to, I remember from the original presentation when we were talking about the new license, you had mentioned, I think, if I remember correctly, that you were talking about doing the brewing in the basement?
Yeah, and at that point, we were still looking at the configuration of the, of the building itself. The, the best spot to do it is what was previously a barber shop, I believe, in the back section. Otherwise, we have to carry things up and down, and I'm not quite...
That was, that was part of my thought process, but then I was also curious as to how the Fire Department felt about that, that kind of activity going on in the, in the basement of a building.
Well, it's, I mean, it's a, it's kind of a moot point at this, right now, because we...
Because you got it up, okay.
I mean, even, even before we first moved the Fire Department, we'd actually moved past that.
All right. Thank you.
Additional questions?
And the only question is, do you want to make a motion? I don't think we have to.
We've got a motion.
No, I, if he wanted it tabled until we got a response from Manning, but personally, I don't think it's necessary myself, but I would honor your request if you wanted to do that.
I think they have a situation much closer to them.
Well, they do.
Yes. And I'm thinking of one closer, yes.
Much closer.
Alexi Attorney, is there a possibility to include that question in that inquiry? I could look into the school district and include that in my liquor background check?
All right. At least...
Well, I just think it's fair. If we're making a variance on the school, and we're not making them aware of it, I mean, why even have it in the ordinance then? I mean, we should change the whole ordinance and just get rid of the 1,000 feet, if that's the case.
Well, it was published in the newspaper. You raised an absolutely valid point. I'm not contesting you. I'm just saying legally, if we did, the village did what it was required to do.
Okay.
Should it have taken the extra step, contacted the school? You can argue that would be a worthwhile step.
Would there be any issue with me following up on that during... Would there be any issue with me following up on that during my background investigation?
No, because part of the idea of issuing a liquor license is its impact on health, safety, welfare of the community. So if you have a school that vociferously objects as a valid reason, you can take that into account.
Okay, then I will, for the board now, I will include that in my checklist of things to do.
Good, thanks. And again, I think the key is they got to satisfy all the safety concerns, the sprinkler, before they can occupy it. Okay. Any additional? Seeing a roll call, please. Trustee Nero? Yes. Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Barker? Yes. Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
We look forward to the opening.
Yeah. Good luck. Thank you.
Moving on to New Business D, 2063th Street, McDonald's Drive-Thru and Expansion. Board to consider ordinance approving the following requests from McDonald's USA LLC to allow for the operation and modification of an existing drive-thru in the C1 Commercial Business District. One, special use permit to expand and operate a drive-thru. Two, a variance to permit parking in the front yard setback. Three, variance to increase the maximum number of menu boards. Four, variance to permit a larger trash enclosure in side and rear yard setbacks. And five, site and landscape plan. Joe?
Can I correct something? I think the address is 31 East. I don't know. That's not your fault, it was mistyped on.
That's true, and the ordinances do say 31.
31, yes.
31.
Yes, 31 is the correct address, and I think all the attachments still reference it as 31. It was published as 31 as well.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Village Board. So what's up for consideration is a, what on paper is a fairly simple project, but when you look at the ordinances that have jurisdiction over this, make it fairly complicated. So, the exist, this is an existing McDonald's, there is no record of an existing special use approval. So basically, when the McDonald's was built in the 80s, we have a special use requirement for anything with a drive-thru. This predates that was there. Now, since they are making modifications to the drive-thru, this is our chance to address the special use and get that on record. And if we did have issues with the past drive-thru, this is the time to discuss them. So there is a special use permit to expand the drive-thru and actually establish that special use permit. So what exists there now is what they call a tandem drive-thru, which if you've ever driven through it, it is one in front of the other, so one speaker in front of the other. What they are asking to do is reconfigure it to the current corporate standard of a side-by-side drive-thru. So a good example is the McDonald's in Downers Grove, which I'm sure no one here drives to. We all go to ours. It's a side-by-side setup, and what it does is it makes it more efficient to get the cars in and out, and it remedies some of the backups that you get standing when you're waiting for one speaker or the other. So, in order to accomplish this, they need some variances. So, this property is formally underparked by our parking standards. So when they approached staff, we said, "Whatever modifications you make, you really should be consistent and keep the same number of parking spaces." Because if you reduce it, then it opens up discussion for the fact that the entire site is underparked. So they have proposed putting two more parking spots on the northeast corner by the drive-thru, which does require it to be in the 30-foot front yard setback. They're requesting to be at 20.2 feet or a 9.8-foot variance. I will discuss the landscaping and the screening for it in just a moment. They are requesting to increase the maximum number of menu boards. Obviously, if you're going from one in front of the other and to two side-by-side, you need to double the amount of menu boards. There are two on-site now. They will actually need four, but in terms of the square footage, it's actually reduced because they're smaller menu boards. So it actually is a reduction in the overall signage, just an increase in the number of signs that are there. There is a variance to allow a larger trash enclosure in the side and rear yard setbacks. So what they're doing is right now, they have a trash enclosure that's behind the building, and they have a dumpster that is on the southeast corner down by the school. They're proposing on putting a trash enclosure at that southeast corner, making it large enough for all the dumpsters. So where we would permit a 100-square-foot dumpster in those side and rear yard setbacks, they're asking for a 470-square-foot dumpster. And then, of course, there's a site and landscape approval plan. They are reconfiguring some of the lot in order to accommodate. They are moving and shifting around about eight or 10 spaces. Some of those spaces are what I would call sheltered by the drive-thru lanes. They're encouraging employees to park in those because it does have an inherent conflict when you're backing out. The landscape, they have looked at the entire site, and they are upgrading the entire site to our current standards. So for example, there is a small drive that goes in front of the building that you can kind of get around the building. There's nothing that screens the parking or the drive. They are installing landscape there to screen the cars so you can't see the street. So in addition to those new parking spaces, that will be screened, and the dumpster enclosure that they're building will be screened. They are actually bringing the entire site up to current standards. And as always, I am available for any questions. The applicant is here. It was a five-to-two decision at Planning and Zoning when it went to Planning and Zoning on the 11th. The dissension votes were really specific to that parking in the front yard setback. There is an adjacent lot that provides parking that is actually the bank property. So this is the property that allows you to get over to Cass Avenue. There is an agreement that they can park there. Part of Planning and zoning's concern was you could probably fit those two extra spaces on that lot. That takes some amount of coordination with the bank. So I've got the applicant here, they're going to speak briefly to what they've, their discussions with the bank and their decision to proceed with the variance request.
And for the record, we need you to state your name.
Sure.
It echoes out there like I'm behind.
My name is Kenneth Sack with Watermark Engineering. As Joe mentioned, McDonald's has approached the bank about back in here, try to figure out, right back in here is the easement area. There's an opportunity for striping there, we can restripe it and possibly get two additional stalls back. We've approached the bank, or McDonald's has, and they weren't aware that there was an easement there. So we've provided them with paperwork explaining that. They're going to look into it. They told us that it's their busy time of the season right now. They'll get back to us when they have, when they're available to do that. I'm not sure when we're going to hear from them, but when we do, we'll come back with Joe and we'll give them the results of that. And if we do have an opportunity, we will restripe it and try to get those additional stalls back.
And this is something that McDonald's is requiring everywhere? The doubling?
Pretty much. Not a requirement, but that's their goal is to, almost all of them are putting it side-by-sides. And I've been doing this for quite a while, I haven't heard a negative thing about any of the new side-by-sides. They seem to help the sites and keep circulation go and prevent vehicle stacking.
I know this is new ownership, and I see that he's back there, but we had an opportunity to talk, he's putting remodeling too. I think he's, you want to come up and introduce yourself and...
Hi, my name is Nick Cory. New ownership, I'm a McDonald's owner-operator, we have nine other locations throughout the southwest suburbs. Purchased this location in March. Immediately saw an opportunity, one from a safety standpoint, because as you know before, the line stack was on Cass, especially in the mornings. With what we're proposing, essentially what you're going to do is you're going to create a side-by-side, so the line stack condenses a little bit and it creates less of a situation where we're filtering out on the street. And then, obviously, it's a traffic generator for us, it's a revenue generator for us. We probably increased probably 10 to 12% in sales and guest counts as a result, and it really just makes sense. So this would be the only location currently that I have out of 10 that doesn't actually have a side-by-side drive-thru. It's just more efficient, it works better for our teams, it works better for the guests. In terms of remodeling, yes, next year, we would be doing, essentially gutting the entire dining room and redoing that as well. I think that's slated for the latter part of 2019. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody have a question in the audience? Come out, you come to the podium and state your name and...
My name is Audrey Payne, 29 South Williams, and I just want to know about the placement of 475 square feet of trash in relation to people that live around that southeast corner of the space.
We are relocating the trash enclosure to the lower right-hand corner of the site. It's much more accessible for the trash company. We're also screening that trash corral. Behind the area south of there is a field, there is a little bit of a berm there that does shield it. As I mentioned, we are providing some lilac bushes around there. We also are providing a tree and some other shrubs on the north side of that to shield it.
My question here is to older, sorry, that was around there that we have to smell trash.
Well, it is a newer, it is a new trash corral, and I'm pretty sure the owner-operator will take care of his site and keep the area clean.
So, basically, just like any of our other locations, so first of all, there's a field behind it, and then there's a auto body that's budding directly up to where the trash corral would be, right? And what you would find is that we do pickups two to three times a week. In the nine other locations that I have, and I have residential that's actually there, I've never had any issues. That's the only kind of thing that I can speak to, but there's no residential that would be right there that would be affected by it.
That was your question. What was that about?
Come in.
Any plan to bring the McRib back?
I think it's November.
Okay, all right.
Anybody else from the audience?
Actually, according to what I see here, Remus actually goes all the way back, that little, what they were talking about, that section in the back that's owned by the bank, that's not behind Remus. Remus owns all the way back. So where they want to put the trash container, really the only one that looks like it really gets affected by is Remus auto body.
Joe?
That's just what I wanted to note, that there's actually, although the school to the south is zoned residential, Remus is on the other side of it, so there is actually no residences probably within several hundred feet of the site or the dumpster.
Thank you.
Still a good question to be sure we got it covered.
Any additional? I need a motion.
Motion to approve Nero.
Second Little.
Motion made and second to approve. Any additional comments or questions from the board? Seeing none, I'd ask Clerk Simmsky for a roll call. Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Look forward to the renovation.
Yeah, I think it's going to be great.
New Business E, vacation of public alley. Board to consider ordinance approving the vacation of a portion of the public alley located immediately south of 1 West Quincy Street in Westmont. I think Attorney Zemneck?
Sure.
Or manager mayor?
The next item on the agenda is a development project that the board will consider. This alley is, this portion of this alley is located in the middle of that proposed development project, and the developer wants to incorporate the portion of the public alley into the development. State statute says that the village can vacate any street or alley if it feels like it will serve the public interest, and that determination is considered final for the purposes of any sort of court review, so you've got the authority to do this. There's other means, this, the remaining alley kind of would form an L shape, so there's other means of ingress egress for the residents and businesses that abut that alley. So this would not block off any alley or street access for any residents or businesses. The village had the alley appraised, and the applicant here, the adjacent property owner, is willing to pay the fair market value for the alley, which is $62,000. I think it's about 910 linear feet, about 16 feet wide. And it's important to approve this, the vacation first, before you consider the development requests, because in order to consolidate lots and consider the development requests, you have to vacate the alley first. This ordinance, although you'd be approving it tonight, will not become effective until the developer who's up next acquires title to all of the properties, which is currently under contract to purchase. And if he does not acquire title by April 1st of 2019, this ordinance becomes automatically null and void.
Motion to approve. Barry?
Motion to approve.
Second Nero.
Second. Comments, questions? Anybody? Board?
Yeah, Mayor.
Yes.
This would be for staff again. Have we heard from any of the neighbors that were notified about the vacation of the alley?
At the Planning and Zoning, I think we only had maybe one or two neighbors that actually showed. None showed any specific comments about the actual vacation of the alley. Later, I'll discuss that there are issues with the turn in the alley that are still there, it's a tight alley.
I remember that, yeah.
So, there were no comments specifically to the vacation or the loss of this access point over to Cass Avenue. We did have one business owner that was here that was concerned with deliveries mostly during the construction phase, but I think through that public hearing, they were satisfied with the answers that they got.
Thank you.
Any other questions aboard?
Really, that alley serves somewhat of a nuisance, the way, we already have a traffic congestion problem there, so it, to me, it's long been a nuisance there without the development.
Seeing no other questions, I'd ask for a roll call. Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Motion passes. New Business F, 1 West Quincy Street, TOD redevelopment Holiday Properties. Board to consider ordinance is approving the following requests from Holiday Properties LLC, Renee and Maria Storgen, Maria Storgen Trust, LaSalle Trust Number 133666, and the Village of Westmont, relating to zoning and development of a mixed-use building generally located at the southwest corner of South Cass Avenue and West Quincy Street in Westmont. All 11 of these are separate items, they're on the agenda. I'm going to ask Joe to comment on them, and the format is going to be, Joe's going to make a presentation, Holiday will make the presentation, then I'll open it up to the public for comments. So, it's all yours, Joe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Village Board. I'm going to try to touch on each one of the zoning entitlements that are requested, but be brief to some of the other information since we do have the applicant here that is going to make a presentation. So what's before you is 1 West Quincy. So this is what we would consider a transit-oriented development, it's one of the first that we expect in the village. This is for the southwest corner of Cass and Quincy. It involves roughly five properties, although two of those properties are, one of those is the right-of-way, that vacation that we just discussed. The other is Mary Egan Park, which is right on the corner. So those are basically two village-controlled or village-owned properties. So what is being proposed is a five-story, 94-unit residential building with 3,000 square feet of commercial space that would front to Quincy Street. There would be 123 parking spaces, the majority of those in an enclosed space in the first and basement level of the space. This is in the B1 Downtown District, it is a TIF district. The first zoning entitlement that's being requested is a comprehensive plan amendment. So at the corner is the village-owned Mary Egan Park, so this is a village-owned property. That property was obtained many years ago after the restaurant that was on-site burned down. The village purchased it because it was a blighted property, and we felt that something should be done on a very prominent corner. So it was always a zone to B1, so it's, there is no reason to rezone it. What did happen is when the comprehensive plan was adopted in 2013, anything that was open space was labeled as such. So before this development can proceed, it needs to request to be redesignated as Downtown Mixed Use, which matches the area around it. There's a zoning code variance to increase the maximum allowable floor area ratio. .8 is what is permitted in the zoning district, 2.8 is what is requested. This is a measure of density, and basically, whenever you get a second story on a building, you double the density. So when you go to five stories, you are greatly increasing that density. In the downtown, we currently allow 40 feet. They are requesting 60 feet. There is variances to all of the setbacks, and I want to emphasize that one of the factors that creates setbacks is height. It basically says the taller you go, the more there's an increase in your setback, so that is one of the cases here. And then, the way our setback code reads in the B1 district, none of our downtown businesses as they exist could be permitted today, because we actually, on Cass Avenue, have a 17-foot setback, and that is just the way the code is. So any development in the downtown is going to request similar setbacks. So for the front yard, 5 foot is required, 0 is requested, so that is bringing it up to the lot line. The front yard would be considered the Quincy Street side. There is the side yard adjoining a street, which would be Cass Avenue. Cass Avenue is very unique. It doesn't say a setback from the property line. It says there is a distance from the middle of Cass Avenue that we would like. That is 50 feet. When you actually translate that, they're requesting a 17-foot setback. They want to be at the 0 lot line as well, so basically, the building would be right up to the sidewalk. There is a variance to the side yard, which would be the 911 Quincy, which is the vacant building there. It is required to be 12.5 feet, and that is due to the height. They are requesting 0 as well, so they want to abut the adjacent building, which is similar to all the buildings in Quincy. They all abut each other and are right next to each other. There is the rear yard setback, which actually would be adjacent to Richmond Station. That is required to be a 27.5. All rear yards are a 20% depth factor. They are requesting 5. And just to give you a comparison, Richmond Station would have been required to have a 20-foot setback, and it was permitted to be built at 3. So they obtained a variance to be at 3. So the adjacent building is, there will basically be an 8-foot separation between those two buildings. They are looking at variances to the parking. So we've kind of divided this up to the residential request and the commercial request. For the residential, the multifamily, they are requesting a variance of 37 spaces. So their parking ratio, I think, is 1.1. Our parking codes don't quite translate it in the same way. We look at dwelling units and number of bedrooms. It is a calculation that is a fairly industry standard when you consider a TOD, Transit-Oriented Development. 37 spaces is requested for the residential, and then for the commercial, we have done the highest and best use or the most dense use. They are proposing to seek a tenant that is a restaurant. That would require a variance of 19 spaces. In the discussions for the planning and zoning, the adjacent metro lots and availability, particularly in the evening with the restaurant use, I think it was in general, are very well-received. That is a total request of 56 spaces. There is the preliminary platted subdivision, which is actually a consolidation of all these lots, including that vacation lot, the alley that we just discussed. There is the site and landscaping approval. Obviously, this site does not have a lot of landscaping. The applicant actually has met staff requests to install planters that are actually in the village right-of-way. Obviously, we'd have to have the appropriate agreements to protect the village, but basically, to install those planters, maintain those planters, particularly to give safety, because that is a busy corner. You want to protect the people that are walking around on the sidewalk, but also to add greenery and beauty on that corner. And finally, a development agreement. So what did the planning and zoning hearing kind of disseminate through that process? One of those is that the applicant is suggesting a lot of amenities, basically things that make this a high-quality development. So it was requested in the meeting that they enter into a development agreement to guarantee those amenities, such as a concierge that is staffed there during normal business hours, and the applicant will go through that quickly. They have worked out a development agreement with us that it is here for approval as well. The other thing was, the elevations were a little bit lacking in terms of how they met and the other buildings. So basically, where it meets 9 and 11, it was shown as a blank wall. Where it meets Richmond Station, it was shown as a blank wall. We asked for them to provide more detailed elevations. They have done as such. They have provided a better brick detail, and in particular, they also have offered a space at staff request for a potential mural, which has been a discussion topic through the village, because above 9 and 11, on the third floor, there's actually viewing from the train, so it's a good opportunity for a mural. They are willing to work with the village to trying to figure out what could go there and what's appropriate. And then finally, there were concerns about the alley. There is, it is a tight turn. They have made accommodations by kind of giving some space on their own property. I would say that is an unresolved, it is, the design that is there, there is a property that's adjacent, that there's the inability to work around right now. There are some utilities. It's not a difficult, or I'm sorry, it is a difficult turn for trucks to make, but they have provided us truck turning diagrams, and the fire department has approved the diagrams that they have been given based on their truck turning radii. And as always, I'm available for questions, and I'll turn it over to the applicant.
I think what we'll do is we'll ask Holiday to make their presentation, then I'll open it to the public, and then the board will address concerns or issues at that point.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, Village Trustees. Good evening, Village Staff. My name is Drew Mitchell. I'm Vice President of Development for Holiday Properties, and I'm here tonight to present Quincy Station. Quincy Station is a 94-unit catalytic transit-oriented development right here on the corner of Cass and Quincy in downtown Westmont. This project has been something that we've been working on really for years. It was 2013 when we started looking around Westmont and trying to identify parcels that we could combine in order to assemble the sufficient land to offer a concierge-style residential development here in Westmont. Took us some time. It's really tricky to put these kinds of parcels together, particularly in towns that have the kind of history that Westmont does. You're typically looking for urban infill, and a lot of times, you're trying to identify parcels that are underutilized. You're dealing with situations very often that include vacating alleys, or looking at, in this case, there's a public space on the northeast corner. So we went through this long process of trying to identify parcels. Your Chamber of Commerce was really terrific in terms of helping guide that process. We zeroed in on this corner here at Cass and Quincy. My passion on this planet is catalytic downtown developments in A-plus locations in A-plus municipalities, and I think we've got both of those here in Westmont. So Quincy Station, it's 94 units, condo-quality development. It's a mixture of ones, one-bedroom plus dens, two-bedroom, two-bedroom plus dens, on four stories above two levels of parking. There were a number of agreements, and Joe mentioned this, that came out of the planned commission, and I'd like to quickly run through those. These were easy agreements for us, because part of what we're trying to do is really deliver a luxury environment where people can rent. And I'll quickly run through what those are, but we're agreeing to offer an onsite manager and leasing concierge person during normal business hours. We don't consider necessarily the person that's managing our business to be just a property manager, or somebody that's trying to get people in the door. This is somebody who's welcoming the residents home. They're handling their packages when they arrive. They're helping them make a dinner reservation. If they have a guest and they need an overnight parking pass, they're working, they're helping with that. I brought Cara Pagels here. Cara runs our residential leasing program for Holiday Properties in Illinois, and if there are any questions to that, she will be able to help me address that. I've also got Garrett Cameron, who's a development analyst with Holiday, and our architect, Chris Walsh from Tandem. To keep moving, another thing that was of great discussion at planned commission was the quantity of parking spaces relative to the number of units. So there's a reason why this was a big part of the discussion. I serve on the Downtown Downers Grove Committee, and one of the biggest complaints is the lack of parking in the downtown. This is not a problem that's unique to Downers. It's not a problem that's unique to Westmont. Quite frankly, it's a good problem to have. It means that you have a vibrant downtown. But we're very, we very much understand that parking is really important. We also cannot build a building that has insufficient parking for our residents, and there's a very important reason why. It's because we can't fill the building if we run out of parking spaces. So it's really, really important that we nail that and we get that right. Joe very rarely misspeaks. He said we had a 1.1 to 1 parking ratio. It's actually 1.2 to 1 for the residential. So we have 113 residential parking spaces in 94 units. There's a couple of other things that we do to try to mitigate the demand for parking from our residents. And one of these is on paper. It's an envoy. At Burlington Station in Downers Grove, we're introducing envoy car sharing. It's a building-owned electric vehicle that our residents can check out, and they can utilize, similar to a Zipcar, which you'd have in Chicago. It can be rented on an hourly basis or on a daily basis. We're starting with one car out there. It's been really, really popular, and it's something that we're agreeing to do here. The other thing that we are doing is we're incorporating a minimum of two electric-vehicle charging stations. We're happy to agree to that. We think that that's the way that the world's going. Another thing that we've agreed to is that the building is going to be pet-friendly. There's a couple reasons why this might, that are a little subtle, that might be more important. Pet-friendly buildings collect higher rent. That's not why we're doing it. We're doing it because the type of residents that we're after are demanding that. We're looking at millennials, professionals that are working in local businesses, and empty nesters. And they're bringing a dog with, and we need to be able to accommodate that. So that pet spa allows you to wash your dog or cat, if they like it, blow-dry and cut, and then we will have breed restrictions. Our insurance company requires us to do that. We're also going to feature a package handling system. You would not believe what the Amazonification of the world is doing to the way that people manage packages. You have to build your buildings to accommodate it. If you don't, all of a sudden, they're spilling into your lobby. So we use Pakage Zen. I won't bore you. Joe told me to be brief. I'll try to keep moving. We will also have a bicycle studio and onsite bicycle storage. This is something also that in these kind of developments, we tend to attract people that are a little bit more fitness-centric. We need to have a place for people to store bicycles. Typically, not typically, we will have a way for them to work on their bike. They can fill the tire, the air in their tires, hex wrenches, that kind of thing. Another thing that we're doing, and we like to do this partially from a security standpoint, we're introducing Butterfly MX system. So when you used to go and buzz somebody, and you'd wait, and they'd let you in, those days are kind of gone. It's now all on your cellphone, so when you buzz the unit, their cellphone rings, you can see who it is. If it's somebody that's friendly, you can let them in. If it's not friendly, you don't let them in. That just introduces a level of security that's really important to us. It's also really important to our residents. There's a couple of other commitments that we made to the planned commission. One, which I think is actually really cool, it's concealing cars parked in the garage on Cass Avenue. What we're trying to do on Cass, on the elevation on my left, is make it, activate this space, make it feel commercial. We really can't introduce additional commercial in this space. This is a super, super busy part of Cass, and to have additional commercial here, also without the parking, it'd be really challenging. But what we don't want is people walking by to look in and see a bunch of cars. So this is being concealed architecturally, and it's being concealed with landscaping. The other thing that we did is we moved our leasing lobby onto the east side of the building, so it's a hotel-style feel when you walk into this leasing lobby. Then we devoted 3,100 square feet of probably the most valuable space on Quincy, and we're bringing in, well, we're bringing in a restaurant, and that's our objective. We've been talking to a restaurateur. You can probably figure out who they are. They're in Hinsdale, and they're opening a location in Downers Grove, and they want to be here. They want to be in Westmont. So we're really excited about that, and we're in negotiations and working on that. Okay, keep going. The other commitments that we made is, we'd like to have some sort of arrangement with the village regarding overnight guest parking. So this is something that happens basically from LaGrange to Hinsdale to Downers Grove. You can call the police department. You can get an overnight parking pass. I believe we have that here in Westmont as well. You can park between 2:00 to 6:00 p.m. What that would allow guests to do is if they have a mother or father visiting, or if it's an empty nester and their kids are in town, they can park someplace overnight. We call the village. That's something that our leasing concierge would do, and we'd get a pass to do that overnight, and we can pay a reasonable fee for that. Another commitment was planters in the right-of-way. We need to address insurance, indemnification, and maintenance, and that's no big deal for us. And then finally, we will have lease language that shall prohibit and penalize the outside storage of items on balconies. There's two things here, just personally. One is when people leave a bunch of junk on their balconies, it looks terrible. The other thing, it drives me nuts when I drive around and see buildings that are built and they don't put window treatments in, and then you've got draperies and blankets, and so I'll make another commitment that we'll put roller shades in the building, and we'll have a consistent facade across the whole building. It's something that we do in all of our projects. So, Joe, trying to be brief. I'm going to hand it over to Chris Walsh real quick to talk through some of the revisions to the elevations that came up during planned commission, and then I'd like to speak a little bit with Chris to the alley turn, the efforts that we made there to try to resolve that, and then finally, I'm aware there's a petition circulating from the public. I'm actually really excited about that, and there's a reason why, because people really care about their town, and they care about Westmont. So for me to see that people are getting excited about change and excited about, you know, this type of activity, it's really, really a good thing. So I look forward to hearing their comments and addressing them to the best of our ability.
Hello, my name is Chris Walsh. I'm with Tandem Architecture. The architects, we've been working with the village and with Holiday on this project for quite a few months now. So as Drew has explained, we've gone through a lot of comments. We've answered as much as we could. I think I said this to planned commission, but I've never personally gone this far designing a building, honestly, and working out all the bugs to this point. So I mean, we believe we've really addressed as much as we can to this point. So everyone, I believe, knows the location. This is just a quick site plan, just to reiterate some of the things Drew had talked about. The dark red along Quincy is the retail space. The more pinkish area would be the public space for the residents. And as he said, the entrance would actually be off of Cass Avenue. The gray is the parking. And as you can see, he had talked about the parking does extend along Cass Avenue, and it was something we've talked to staff about. We wanted the building to have articulation down the street. Our first proposal actually was more of a monolithic elevation that went, was the same all the way down. We've kind of worked through, and the concept here is that it looks like a building, a bunch of buildings that have been built over time. So this is supposed to look like this is just part of the town. It's been here, you know, being built for the last, you know, 80 years. Zoomed in a little bit, and this shows, so people would enter through the alley, and they would either go up or down to parking. There is also an surface lot. 10 of those spaces would be for the retail, and you would enter again off the alley, go to the T, turn east, and enter into that spot. And then there's surface parking for the residents as well there, and rear entrances. This would be the underground parking.
Can you back up just two? This is kind of tricky to get your head around. So there's really two entrances to parking. There's a lot of competition for the first-floor space.
Drew, you have to stay at the podium and maybe point at the projector.
So you've got a lot of competition for first-floor space. We're trying to introduce commercial. We're also trying to get our residents in and out of the building, and we're also trying to manage parking. So a lot of competition. It's one of the biggest challenges when we're trying to do these sort of developments, is how do you sort of deal with all of these competing uses for the first floor? This is actually kind of a cool plan, I think, because you've got two points of ingress egress. One is a ramp down, just like you'd see currently at Richmond Station. That goes underground. The second ramp is, has a point of ingress egress, and it's that grade. So basically, these are sandwiched on top of each other. It's structured parking. It's temperature-controlled, and it's lit with LEDs, feels very safe on the inside, but that, it's not super obvious, even for me, and I read plans a lot, how that exactly works. So I just thought that might be helpful.
Okay, thank you. Again, here's the lower level that Drew just explained, the ramp coming down, and the elevators, the stairs, everything would extend down to these levels as well, and so you'd have lobbies at either end of the building. These are same plans, they're just actually in black and white. This is a typical floor plan of the units and how they would face. It's, we haven't laid out the kitchens and everything in here, so these may move an inch or two, but essentially, there's a corridor down the middle, elevators and stairs at either end. Now, the top floor, if you've noticed, in the upper right-hand corner, there's a clubhouse, and we'll see this on the elevations, but this is one of staff's earlier And we'll see this on the elevations, but this is one of staff's earlier comments. And if you look at the renderings on your right, they wanted the building to step down next to, you know, the side where the Taco Palace would be, that side of the building, down towards the existing buildings along Quincy. So what we came up with is let's put an outdoor space, a clubhouse up at the top there. So you get, the residents will have parties up there, you'll get the people talking and laughing and, you know, partying up there. Hopefully, we have a great vibrant restaurant at the bottom, and you really get an energy coming off of this building. So as you walk off the train, that's where you want to be. You get drawn to that spot. So this did a few things for us. So it also gets that clubhouse up at the top, it has that penthouse feel for when the residents have their parties and that. So we thought that was a great idea. And again, you know, working through staff and just back and forth on this. So this is a black and white, and you can kind of see on the right how the clubhouse patio would step back there, you know, have a fire pit or fireplace. So hopefully, it'd be an almost all-around year type of place. This is the elevation along Cass. And again, what we want to show with this is we've really tried to make it look like it's different buildings as they've been built over time. And also, as you're walking by, you're not just looking at a blank wall where there's cars behind you. We wanted it to have screening and have undulation in the facade. There's vegetation, there's benches, there's a balcony with a balustrade of columns or colonnade. And here's a color rendering as you would see it from the street. One of the changes we made here, you'll see it better on the next slides, but this slide is slightly different from the one that was shown to the plan commission in that the windows behind the colonnade used to have vegetation covering them. We thought this restaurant, the kitchen, would have to be located there. We figured out a way to push the kitchen back and open it up to all glass on the colonnade. And again, here's the corner, which we feel is the most prominent corner possibly in Westmont. We really wanted to have a presence with something, again, we've gone back and forth with staff on colors and things like that. And this is what we've rounded down to, and we feel that it will really set off that corner as a landmark. So these, again, these were added since the plan commission, from comments from the plan commission. This is looking from Richmond Station, and the shaded area would be Richmond Station. We're going to wrap the materials from the front elevation around the corner. So as you're, this building is set in front of Richmond Station by about 14 feet. So we would wrap the materials around, and you can see that on the right. And then you can see the color change. I know it might be very subtle in this, but as we're doing on the front, we're changing bricks, we're changing colors to give it that vibrance and not that monolithic feel. From talking after the plan commission, we've decided to carry that theme around the back, where we would change the bricks and mimic the feel on the front towards the back. So this elevation, you can see on the left is the area that Joe was mentioning, and it was a good point. You will be able to see the side for a certain amount of time until the buildings next door are developed, but we chose to carry the materials around the side, the west side of the building. And the mural where it says Westmont, again, that would be an open canvas that they'd be, Holiday is willing to work with the village on to do a mural. And so we would carry the materials around, the limestone banding, the brick colors, and that from the side to, or from the front to the side. Anyone who's been to Chicago or any building, you know that typically, a builder will go to common brick around the side and that type of thing. So it's not odd, but we thought that was a good comment, so we've embraced that. These are interior, in the courtyard of where the parking are. Okay, you know, it's to show that there would be a ramp and entrance. There are balconies looking out that way. There is the outdoor space on the right at the lower portion of that right elevation. And then this was also asked for from the plan commission, what will this look like? Right now, we've modeled it where you're standing on the back porch of the house across the street. So this is what it would look like if, you know, you were to look across the alley out the back of the houses that are there. We're generous on playing down the, some of the features that are in the alley, light poles and things like that that are there, and they're not going anywhere. But these are just, you know, some of the things that are in the alley right now, and these are actual pictures. Just an explanation real quick on the, how the screening would work, and the upper right-hand corner of this slide shows the parking, and if you could zoom in on it, which I can't, there are vents that are required to be in parking spaces that would open if there's a certain amount of CO2. We've all seen them on buildings, they're not the best-looking things. So we would build screens in front of those, vegetation, whatever else to hide those things. These are some other elements. Top left corner is the fencing that would be in the alley, and it would hide the cars from the people who would be driving down the alley. And these are some samples of features that would be, you know, we're proposing that would go with the building. Planters, bike racks, lighting, and a few of the colors of bricks, and I think there'll be, end up being more than that at the end of the day. And this is just to give you an example of what, you know, other people have done with screening, just, you know, what I've tried to describe here, usually easier to see in real life. This is some of the imagery that we've started with in, you know, how we're trying to bring people into the space.
This is inspirational. I mean, we're not trying to turn it into Venice here, but...
Yeah. And again, these were images, we, you know, this is what we're aspiring to, the liveliness we're trying to bring. Some studies on, you know, how the reality of, you've done a great job with this street. You've got a 12-foot sidewalk. We're actually setting the building back another five feet. So there is area, and we also have the colonnade that projects out, something you'd see in New Orleans or something like that, where there, there's actually a covered space that we feel just creates a space for the restaurant, where they can have outdoor dining. I'm sure there'll be times where they'd like to borrow some of the 12 feet and have, you know, larger gatherings outside. But these are the types of images that, you know, we're looking at and trying to work out to get this feeling. If you, if we just push the building up to the front lot line and come here and ask for zero space, you can't do this. So again, it's something that we're really trying to create, going back to what Drew's, you know, saying, we just want a feeling for this building. Interior is, again, some inspirational images on, Holiday really tries to make things look like a hotel, feel like a, you've just walked into a hotel and you're living at, a luxurious Outdoor space upstairs, the clubhouse, again, inspiration for what we're hoping we'll have at the end of the day.
Pet spa.
Pet spa on the right. One thing I need to cover real quick, and I apologize for this. The alley, Joe had mentioned a space, Holiday has agreed to dedicate a space to the alley. What we feel is, I'll try to point to it with the pointer here. But at the corner, we could have put another parking spot here and made our, you know, parking better. But, you know, talking through it, we feel it's better. If we dedicate 10 by 30-foot space, whatever that is, and the next person dedicates 10 feet, and the next, you will get that full turning radius around that alley. So we were happy to say, if that's, you know, that would help everybody, that would just be their part of this development. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. We're getting close to the end. I think, just to give everybody a little bit of a flavor, family-owned company, we've been around since 1952. We're primarily known for our master-planned business parks in the state of Indiana. If you've been to the Bass Pro Shop in Portage, we built that whole development. Even our industrial buildings are done with an architectural detail and some flavor. We're not just putting up steel pole barns. I take great passion in really trying to deliver what is ultimately a piece of art. And just to give you a couple of examples, I mean, even to make the building in Downers Grove that we're doing a little bit more special, we acquired a clock that sat overlooking the monument to the Great Fire of London. We've named it Big Sam instead of Big Ben, because it was, during the Fire of London, there was a famous diarist named Samuel Peeps, and he wrote about it. So we got this clock, we shipped it out here, it's going on the side of the building, it's going to hang off seven feet with a four-foot face. It is really cool. We acquired original Vivienne Meyer art prints to go throughout the building. The details that we're putting into the units are exceptional. We have very nice tile selections. We have all-mo and faucet fixtures, smart thermostats, fiber optic all the way to the You would be surprised who's moving in these buildings. It's probably the people who are concerned about this development, and they don't want to change a water heater anymore. Maybe they're, you know, they're bumping into the $10,000 in real estate taxes and income taxes, which is changing the tipping point for where it makes sense for people to rent. Communities are demanding that they have nice product like this. There's another thing with it, when you don't have a nice rental product in a community, you're losing opportunity to attract millennials and incubate future homeowners. They figure out where their grocery store is, because they moved to Downers or they moved to La Grange, figure out their grocery store, their doctor, their dentist, and then they buy there. So enough on that. We did work with the adjacent property owner, and, well, we asked, we expressed an interest in acquiring the property to resolve the turn. He was not interested in selling. And then I was asked to briefly cover just generally some of the concerns that we're hearing. You know, a lot of these, you know, Quincy and Cass being shut down, lanes being limited, where's construction equipment stored? We do have this very nice opportunity in this outdoor space right here. You can't see it, but where the surface parking is going, the 10 commercial spaces, that would be a great opportunity for us to stage equipment, place a crane. The apartment access from the alleyway, we actually view as a good thing. It's keeping people off of Cass and getting them in and out of the building, so we do that actually to be quite a bit safer. This building is being built, fire code, there is no issue with fire truck accessibility. There, the current businesses that are existing in these locations, primarily Taco Express, and it's the same owner of the Cater to the South, is staying in Westmont. They're very eager to see this occur. And, you know, what impact will this have on Cass Avenue? We did include a traffic study as a result of this. You know, typically, these cars don't move more than twice a day, so it tends to not be that big of an impact. I get it, there's already a lot of traffic, we understand that. There's also an elimination of some of the existing traffic from the studio apartment units and the businesses that are there. And then there is a question on the impact on our schools, public works, police, fire department, property taxes. I think this is great for you guys. Your downtown con plan is looking for this. Larry Forsberg wouldn't quit calling me for four years saying, let's figure out a way to do this. We're excited to be here. We hope that we have the council's support. And with that, we'll turn it over for questions. Thank you very much.
I think at this point, I'm going to open it up to the public, so we get all their comments, and then I'll allow you an opportunity to answer if there's anything, and then we'll close all that, and the board will have their chance. So if you go to the podium, state your name, you want an address too? An address for our records.
My name is Dale Becker. I live at 101 North Linden. I've been here 48 years. I have a question before I start. Can anybody name Mary Egan's, before it was Mary Egan, what restaurant it was?
Petriest.
Good. I like people that know what they're talking about. The plan and development appears like it's a nice plan and everything. Actually, if I was situated in this property, I would really be supportive of, because you wouldn't have any variances. One of the problems with any planning in downtown is the fact that Cass Avenue, the problems on Cass Avenue have been addressed. Everybody looks at them and says, well, wait till next year, you know, we can't do anything, or what are we going to do? The one disadvantage in the sale of Mary Egan Park would be the fact that you couldn't widen Cass Avenue anymore at that location. So having said that, everybody's got their own idea on it. I do have some questions about the entrances and exits. If you look at the parking and he addressed the alley, the alley situation, I got to, I didn't exactly understand what property he was, wanted to buy, or who else was going to dedicate for the turn in the alley. Because that to me is going to be an ongoing problem for deliveries, moving, whatever. I mean, it, there isn't any designated area here for deliveries or mover, moving garbage, whatever. It's, and this is going to be an ongoing problem. Because over in Downers Grove, the building they developed over there, they had two areas of setbacks. One for where you could come up and go into the building and come out, you know, pick up and delivery, or pick up for people. And the other one was a lane for trucks and garbage pickup and these kind of things. They had two areas that were visible, easy access, that you could understand exactly what the purpose was. This plan doesn't dedicate or show me anywhere, if I was to come up to this building and have a look at a plan, I'd be very difficult to understand where I could park. They do have parking in the alley, but the parking in the alley is supposed to be for retail spaces, yet how do you get, how do you get to the restaurant? I've been looking at that, and I don't understand. Because there's no setback for allowance for a sidewalk on the side of the building and where it goes from Quincy to the back side of the building. There is one against Richmond Station, which I think is a good idea. If you look at the entrances, they have entrances off Cass Avenue, but there's no place to service it. I mean, you're going, you're talking about packages coming. Of course, there are packages, more and more. I look at my daughter and my son and all the stuff that they get, yeah, packages that are coming in. They have made provision to accept the packages, but they haven't made any provision for a truck to make a drop-off so that you could receive the package. The other thing with, so you got an entrance, you got an entrance off Cass, but you, how do you get to it? You got to walk, you go somewhere on Quincy, you go somewhere on Cass? I don't know where you park. The other thing is, I don't understand why they have two elevators that are so far apart. If one breaks down, how do you know? How do you know if the other one's even working? What if a mover, a moving company comes in and is using one of them, or if there's a servicing of an elevator? Plus, on the first floor, in order to, in order to get from the parking lot into the lobby and coffee area, there are steps, but there's no provision for a handicapped person. They can't, they can't do it. They'd have to take the elevator and go up or down, and go up and down to get on the first floor. The other thing, a small thing, I believe they asked for a variance of 60 feet. I believe the height of the building is 63?
No.
Pardon?
60.
It is 60? Okay. I saw a drawing that said 63 with the pair of...
Parabets don't count.
Oh, okay, thank you. The other thing, if you're at the restaurant and you want to, you want to use the retail space, same thing, you can't, you can't get there, you have to go outside the building to get there. thing, you can't, you can't get there, you have to go outside the building to get there. When you're talking, you're having access, is the access with the phones, is that for the apartments or is that for the access to the building? In other words, if you go in, if you go in, your phone is...
Dale, I'm trying not to get the bet. They're writing down and giving you...
Oh, I'm sorry, okay, okay.
Because we could go on...
Yeah, no, I talk too much anyway.
I'm being told I gave you more than three minutes, but you lived here long enough to get more than three minutes.
So, I mean, that's, I mean, he mentioned, he mentioned construction. Just for a side note, I believe Downers Grove, there was somewhere they used 1,200, 1,200 people working on this building. I'm assuming they didn't use them all at the same time. The focal point of this building is construction of 12 to 14 months. I would like to, and I don't know if this is the appropriate time, but I think those issues should need to be addressed. Because their parking conditions for the people to come and, and he talked about a crane, but a crane doesn't take care of the trucks that pull in and stuff like that. So, I'm going to, I'm going to leave it at that.
Thank you, thank you. They'll come up after we close public comment. Now, next person, and if I could ask if something's been covered already, hopefully I don't get five of the same ones, so.
Good evening. I'm John Carey. I'm a resident in Westmont since 1974. I live at 301 South Park Street. When I read about this development, I was reading, I didn't know all the details about it, but as I read the development, it said that this would not essentially change the character of the locality repeatedly throughout the thing. And then you look at it, it's way different from anything we have here. It looks like it's going to change a lot. I have to say thank you to Scott Day, no, Steve May. He sent me a link so I could watch the 12:13 minute meeting, and I watched that this morning and it was a revelation. This is, you know, Mr. Mitchell said it's a catalyst, a game changer, a push, you know, for Westmont. And they have, you know, done some beautiful work over in Downers Grove. So, I went from being kind of skeptical and thinking they were not presenting things as truthfully as they are to, you know, this is pretty exciting and it is a good looking building. There are, actually, I had a lot of questions. I started looking into this a little bit, I just found out about it last week, and that's my fault. But I have a bunch of questions that I don't have to read. Can I, can I hand these in and they can be part of the record? They're mostly just construction questions that they would know about, what do you do with the materials? What do you do with, actually, I have enough copies for everybody. And the developer. But, you know, to summarize what my concerns are, it seems like, you know, this is a big, big step and it's pretty exciting. And all the developing, you know, kudos to Mr. Forster for, you know, economic development. Essentially, what I see here are, you know, some deficiencies. This looks like it's a good plan, it's kind of a Class C plan from looking at it, and it could be better. And I'm glad Mr. Mitchell said that he likes, you know, questions because that's what he wants, wants to generate some activity. Questions can make things better. I think I do have some insights along the lines with what Dale Becker said. And now I have to put my glasses to read my own writing. One of the problems I see, a big problem, is fire truck access with ladder. They, this is a mid-rise building, they don't have to fight, you know, it's not a high-rise where they're going to be fighting a high fire from the inside. They have to have access from outside. And there is no, there's no fire hydrants on the alley side. I don't know if a 100-foot ladder can get access to all the windows. You've got windows, you know, all around the building, lots on the back, you have lots of activity. In fact, I heard, you know, this morning that they're planning on having fire pits up on the roof where the club is. So, I mean, the most likely fire probably is from either the commercial kitchen or I think probably, you know, from parties and having fire pits on the roof of the building. Or on balconies, you know, they've got a lot of balconies and, you know, barbecue pits. So, that, I think that's, you know, something that does need to be addressed and it was not as far as I could tell. And, you know, actually, the fire lane, you know, there's no compliance with fire lanes. You need a 20-foot road. This is a 15-foot alley. You can't put a fire truck down and deploy the stabilizing bars and pads to, so you can extend the ladder and reach for places without tipping over. Another thing is on their, I went over to their Forest Development, Burlington Station, Downers Grove, and looked at it. And I remember when it was, you know, starting out, it was a framed building and I was concerned about that, but then they said it's going to be a concrete, a masonry building with concrete floors. So, it's got to be either a concrete frame or a steel frame. And then they're going to put fire resistant cladding on it. So, it sounds like a great building. But, one of the, one of the things I caught this morning that I enjoyed is Amazonification. I never heard that word before, but I do have millennials in my family. And my youngest son, 32, never purchased a car. I don't understand, I know we don't understand. At 16, you're just dying to get a car. They don't do it. I don't, I don't get it.
That's true.
But, that is, that is a reality. Things are changing. There's a whole paradigm of apartment dwellers is changing homeownership. So, they're going, it's pretty exciting to see this stuff and learn about it. But, one of the things they do, they mention, you know, trying to make it Amazonification friendly, is having charging stations and allow for deliveries and stuff like that. And I see over at the Forest location, they have a, they have a drive up that's off the Forest Street to allow stop, drop off, or Uber, or pickup, you know, right in front of the entrance. The entrance for the apartment with a lobby and concierge, I guess, is going to be on Cass. But, it looks like the plan is to have a truck drive up, put on flashers, hop out, block traffic until that, you know, until he gets whatever business he's doing, gets done. And the same thing with Uber or whatever. And I know my kids amazingly get multiple packages per day. We get some too. I mean, it's, things are changing. But, that would be very disruptive in traffic flow. And if they put a drive up, drop off lane like they have at Richmond Station and over at Forest, at Burlington Station, that would make it much more Amazonification friendly and work better, you know, because, you know, 94 units, I can't imagine how many pickups, drop offs, and Ubers you're going to be having. As Dale pointed out, it's not clear how all that works with delivery. I mean, there's no designated delivery, you know, how do people move? How do they deliver their furniture? How, you know, it's, as Mr. Mitchell says, it's a very tight space that they're working in and it's, you know, it's Herculean task to make a building rise on a site like this. But, these are, you know, these are, you know, clever people with good, good experience and I'm sure they know answers to that, but they were not apparent in the plan that was presented. Another thing that I see is a kind of a disaster that can be resolved on paper or activity beforehand is snow removal and storage. I mean, I saw that come up, and actually, I have to commend the planning board. They, they're pretty, pretty good and thorough. But, they mentioned that and that the answer was, that they got was, looked like, seemed like, you know, firing from the hip at the spur of the moment. They said they would stack the snow on the 10 by 30 spot in the plant or area and the ramps in and out of the garage, which it doesn't seem well thought out. And we, you know, if you, I think there's maybe 6, 8,000 square foot of area that you're going to get snow and they're going to put it on approximately 2,000 square foot of area. And then stacking snow, you know, very high on plant, it doesn't seem practical. So, that, I think, needs to be rethought and it's going to happen. You know, I mean, you're going to have, you know, heavy snow, we get it here, and, you know, and you have to deal with it. We have property out in Galena, they have, everything shuts down, they get loaders stack snow in parking spaces and it stays there until they get dump trucks in and they can haul it off somewhere, probably dump it in the river. But, I think they need a plan to accommodate that. It wasn't apparent in the plan. So, those are three major items and a personal item is, and I talk to a lot of people about this, there, you know, a lot of people are very excited about it, you know. But, as a personal request, I'd like them to restore stop and chat somewhere. I think that's one of the bosses that...
I think everybody wants that.
Everybody wants that.
Yeah.
Well, but we got Tina, so.
Yeah, Tina would be upset.
A lot of guys want the Trias back, too.
Thank you.
And so, with all my questions, which you do have, those are, you know, the concerns that I think are resolvable and are important. And I think this should be sent back to the planning commission to resolve these things because they're very, you know, very important. It's an opportunity to make things flow better there and better Amazonification.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Nice job.
Who's coming up?
Wait a second, is it still?
It's Dirk Trout.
Dirk Pants aren't allowed.
Yeah.
Frank Trout, 328 North Wilmette, lived in Westmont since 1952, since everyone was giving that out. Anyway, Westmont is a beautiful town and this looks like a quality project. I know there's a lot of logical concerns that other residents have with the building and the site. You know, I'm certain that it's gone, as it's gone through the planning commission, going through our different departments, the police, fire, building, that a lot of these concerns that were brought up by the residents have already probably been addressed. I know people have talked to me about, "How's a fire engine going to go down the alley? And how come there's no fire hydrants in the alley back there?" Well, there isn't fire hydrants in alleys and fire engines don't fight fires generally from the alleyway. It's all off the street. That's why your hydrants are on the main drags and on the, on the streets. And so, all those concerns from the fire pit to the construction will all meet village codes. And I'm certain that our Fire Prevention Bureau and our directors and have looked at everything that anyone has ever thought about with this building. Even with the snow removal, just like with the downtown area, in which we picked up the snow in trucks during the night and we haul it away. I'm certain if we have a problem with this building in the alley area behind it, that some, some plan like that will, will have to come about. They're here to come up with a quality ability, it looks that way. This will probably help support new projects within the downtown area. When people start to see the development grow in such a quality building, that's going to encourage other buildings then to emerge or existing buildings to be remodeled and restored. The Village of Westmont lost a golden opportunity in the pharmacy building a few years ago, which half the block was going to be tore down and/or remodeled. And the village board wavered on that. I sincerely hope that we have a little bit of forethought, we have a little bit of backbone in which to come up with good logical plans for the Village of Westmont in the future. As we see other towns along the Quincy, Burlington Quincy Railroad and western suburbs, we see them growing and expanding their downtown areas, even Little Clarend Hills. And let's not, let's make logical, good decisions on what we're going to do with our downtown area because it's been overlooked in recent history. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank.
Thank you, Chief.
Good to see all of you again. My name is Greg Knopfus, owner of Dulce's Restaurant right here at 15 West Quincy Street. So, obviously, in this project, as of current, other than those being displaced, I'm really the only one that this has any real effect on currently, at least until the currency exchange comes in. And I'll actually address a couple of the concerns or questions that you might have regarding the alley because I'm pretty used to, used to that there. So, for one, I am all for the project. I welcome any growth in the area. I welcome another restaurant being right next door. Hell, maybe I'll even want it. But, yeah, exactly. And obviously, you know, the more people that we could put on the street, it does better for us. We do struggle being on a little bit of a side street, you know, kind of off the main drag. So, getting people over by us is great. You want to stack 120 of them right next door to me? Cool. I'm all for it. But again, I welcome that, that growth. So, a couple of things that with the alley, the two bigger deliveries that we have are one of our food vendors and one of the alcohol vendors. They cannot make that turn. They do come off of whatever the street is right here.
Quincy?
Lincoln.
Oh, Lincoln.
Lincoln and back into, back into the alley to make those deliveries. And these are not, you know, the big tractor trailers, these are the shorter, single axle versions. So, that, that is a problem. My only real concerns are, and obviously, this is more during the construction period to, that obviously doesn't impede traffic by us and to know that we are there and that we are open. That's really my only, my only concern there. A concern that might want to consider as a board and is parking, and I know that comes up quite often. Now, granted, there is a ton of parking right out here. However, even with our small place, we do have a neighbor a few doors down that they do have quite a lot of coming and going for different meetings and they occupy on peak times, and when I say peak time, 6 o'clock, 7 o'clock, 30, 40, 50 parking spaces because there are individual drivers coming in and out. So, we do, we do have an issue with some parking with that, so that might come up, you know, obviously with a place that, from what I can tell from the plans, is probably about a 100-seat restaurant. Now, granted, like I said, there is tons of parking, but there might have to be some considerations made with, with others to make that happen. But really, that's it. So, I say, go for it. I welcome it. I think it looks beautiful. You guys did a great job. Thank you.
Thanks, Frank.
Thank you.
My name's Rene Sturgeon. I'm the owner of Taco Express. And I do own 20 South Cass, 14 South Cass, and naturally Taco Express. And I saw this project, they, they got ahold of me and I love Westmont. And I see what's going on on Clarend Hills because I do have a building over there in Hinsdale. But, downtown area in Westmont, it was empty for quite a while. And we need to fill out those spaces. And if this project goes on, and it will bring, like the gentleman said, it will bring people and across the street or whatever, and I forgot the name of that park that's across the street. And I think there's going to be a project down there, if I'm not mistaken, right? They should. Clarend Hills, Hinsdale, and Westmont, they're all beautiful. Then you look at Westmont and it's a facelift. And I think this will bring people in and new projects because Westmont is a beautiful place. And I'm sacrificing Taco Express and I'll move it somewhere else because I've been here for 27 years and I've been successful.
Somewhere else in Westmont? Somewhere else you're moving, but in Westmont?
Yes. And it's very close. But, I need, I need this project to go, go on and I'm already inquiring about it, but I'll be talking to you later on because if I move there, I'm going to need your guys' help. So, Taco Express will go on. And I know you'll be seeing me later on.
Renee, we hope so.
It's always good to see you.
It's always good to see you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Additional? Any, oh, come on up.
Hi, I'm Mike Lynn. I live at 209 South Lincoln. In a lot of ways, I, I, in general, like the project. I also think that bringing in this many people could be, bring a good surge to businesses and local activity. I just couldn't, being a resident, I just thought I'd make, make known some just thoughts and opinions I had, and also some discussions I've had with some other residents. Like I, I've heard, a lot of people seem to express to me, like, like people, other people I speak to in the town talk about how Cass Avenue and the railroad tracks is kind of a bottleneck of traffic. Sometimes I kind of think that, that like other towns, like La Grange and Almirst and other ones, that run on railroad tracks, they, they also seem to have more railroad crossings. I was wondering if, if there could be, like, of course, it wouldn't be necessarily this project, but that if the village or whomever, whatever agency is involved could consider a railroad crossing, maybe somewhere, maybe a half mile east and a half mile west of Cass, just to alleviate the, as I said, the bottleneck at Cass. So say maybe like William Street to the west, and maybe Richmond Street or something on the east. So that was one thought. Let me see. And then I sometimes wonder, again, about the, the parking for the restaurant. I've heard a lot of people concerned about parking, and I kind of think like maybe a solution could be off-site parking, like a parking lot. There's a good view, there's a good view of vacant properties just west on Quincy that I see that are between Quincy and the train tracks, near, I think, Washington and that. I, I sometimes wonder if the, if a municipal parking lot could be there, or whether it's through the, the project or through the village. And that might be a good, a good place to put, if the restaurant has valet, where, where they could dump the, the cars, and also where residents could maybe pay even a lower fee to, to park elsewhere in the town. Again, that might alleviate some of the traffic concerns next to Cass and the train tracks by putting them further out just a little bit. I, I like the, I think a lot of us like the elevation that's on Quincy, and I could tell that the renderings really try to show off the Quincy elevation as we could, as we could see. As far as, I, I just imagine the, the Cass elevation that, I, I sometimes, I've seen a lot of times buildings that try to look like that they're multiple buildings. And personally, I don't know if anyone has thought of it similarly, but I kind of think it looks a bit tacky sometimes, like depending on how it's done, that it could look pretty cliched to, to try to pretend like you're there for, for a long period of time when everyone knows that all the head heights of all the windows line up and all the balconies match and everything, like that it's, it's one building. So I thought I'd make, make that known, and let me see if I have any other notes. I think that's about it. But like I said, a lot of ways, I like the project. I think it'll be a good, kind of little boom to, to Westmont, and that it would support a lot of the businesses. It'd be nice to see more renderings maybe of the Cass Avenue elevation, or just to make sure that we don't, it doesn't look a little bit, like I said, tacky. Let me see. I, I like, as was mentioned, like indulation. I also like articulation and elevations, but something a little bit more refreshing or modern, more similar to your Quincy Street. Quincy Street looks fine. I think it's down Cass. It's a little bit of a mystery to us. We can, we can only tell so much on, on the left elevation. But again, I like the project, and I wish you guys the best with everything.
Thank you. The only thing I, I'll comment on, I think all of us want another railroad crossing. It's not easy. Anybody else?
Want to sit on their street?
Yeah. No one wants it near.
Is that a Lincoln?
Seeing no other public comments, I am going to close the portion of public comments, and I'm gonna ask Holiday if they've got some responses. You don't have to go over all of them because I think Mr. Trout covered that a lot of those will be addressed by staff, but Drew, if you want to go up?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, I, there's two people I'd like to nominate for Plan Commission. It's Dale Becker and John Carey. I mean, they're terrific questions there. And you know what, guys? A lot of times, great, you, we came up with improvements to our plan as a result of feedback from people who are studying plans all the time. So we don't claim to be perfect, but we really try to, try to pin it down. I'm gonna quickly, Mr. Becker, I wish I'd known about the former restaurant. That could have played into our name. It's maybe not too late. Cass Avenue problems, and really, who would dedicate the right-of-way in the alley? You know, sometimes it's challenging for us to solve all, all the problems with, with the development while also trying to not create new problems. I do think that the dedication of those three parking spots to enable turning will alleviate that. That's also one of the ways that we've been exploring, how we get moving trucks in and out. I'm gonna jump to John just because the moving in and out and deliveries came up repeatedly. So typically, regardless of how many packages you're getting, you're getting three deliveries a day. You're getting UPS, you're getting FedEx, and you're getting USPS. So they're making three stops. There's a 15-minute loading zone in front of Mr. Sturgeon's restaurant. That's where they'll be instructed to park. They'll do it every day. They'll bring their packages in. We hit each one of them with packaging, and we put them on the shelf, and then the residents are able to pick them up. So I'm not terribly concerned about that. I don't, you know, training pizza, you know, the pizza delivery guys and the Ubers on where to, where to park is trickier. One of the things you can do with like Uber, if we have 100 units, residents in a unit, we can designate an Uber pickup zone and make it on Quincy. So there's things that we can do to try to alleviate that. Cass is tricky right now. One of the things that we even talked about at Plan Commission was eliminating when you're going south, the left turn, oh, boy, I can't remember the street, to the hardware store, you know, but that we can't do that. And so I'd love to see a drop-off lane there. I think maybe, Chris, we should look at that a little bit harder. But, you know, right now, our expectation, anticipation is that that's occurring on Quincy. Except for move-in, move-out, we use the south elevator to accommodate that activity. There's, well, there's a pathway to do it, and it's at grade so that you're not going up and down in order to get a couch, for example, into, into an elevator. There were questions regarding parking in the retail alley. So he's absolutely right. There isn't access to this restaurant. There's not a single restaurant patron who's gonna park in that parking lot and go all the way around the building and go in the front. And there's also not a sidewalk that connects to it. So really, what we envision there is that these would be our restaurant employees. I think Greg could probably speak to the number of employees that you'd have at a facility like this. But we expect that the restaurant employees would probably be utilizing those spaces. The reason why, why the ordinances require parking is both for customers and the employees. So we're at least removing that element of it. And I would argue we're not introducing any new customer traffic necessarily. I'll back up. But it, you know, there are already people eating at Taco Express and stopping at the caterer, and, you know, they don't really have a place to park right now. So we would argue, and I think the traffic studies showed, that there wouldn't necessarily be a new introduction of traffic from that, but there is an alleviation because of the 10 spaces that are provided and exclusively dedicated to the retail. The, the snow storage, you know, barring unforeseen, you know, 10-year events, which seem to happen twice a year now, you know, the, we do believe that in the planter area that we'd be, we'd be able to push that snow back. If we can't, we have to start hauling snow out, I'm gonna, I'm gonna hear from Public Works. They're gonna say, hey, listen, guys, you got a snow problem over here. We need you to take care of it. And if I don't, the mayor calls me, and then I have a bigger problem. So, you know, part of this is just being neighbors and integrating into the community and trying to properly run a building and professionally run a building. So we understand all of that. There was a question regarding access to the building and how the Butterfly MX works. So anywhere that our, our residents have access, ingress, egress access to the building, they're gonna have a FOB key. It's typically Asa Abloy or another manufacturer. It's kind of like a hotel, except it sits on your keychain. You hold it up to a pad, and the door opens. That FOB system registers who's going in and out, so we know who's getting in and out of our building. The actual video intercom is situated only on places where you would ever expect a visitor to come in. So there are two locations where that would, would potentially occur. And then construction logistics. Oh, my gosh. This is gonna be tough. I, I think, you know, I'm really excited about that space behind where the restaurant would go because to me, it's really one of the last things that we're gonna need to touch. It's flat surface. You know, one of the things that we can do is hustle and try to get fire suppression into our garage so that we can store and stage materials in the garage. That's a coordination with the fire department. You know, a lot of times, they don't like that. So, you know, we have to work on that. But that's one of the things that we did in Downers Grove is we utilized, once we got the parking structure situated, we've been able to, to stage materials in that and keep it off the street. We do keep a very clean site out in Downers Grove. It is a tight site. We are lot-lined, lot-lined out there. Somebody brought up questions of, of construction duration. So, and, and even in the petition, there was a comment that we started in 2015, and we're still not done. Our building permit was pulled in November of 2016, and our first residents move in in September of eight, September 14th this year, 2018. So that's an appropriate construction duration, and there's a couple of things there. I'm not saying that we're not gonna run into goofy stuff here. We probably will. We got an alley to tear up. There's utilities in it. But I, I think we can get this building built in 18, 18 to 20 months. So, and we're shooting for 18. I mean, every month that we go longer, it costs more money. I'm jumping, did you miss anything on Mr. Becker, Chris, that you wanted to add? Okay, jumping to Mr. Carey. I wrote "Commercial Kitchen." Not sure what I was responding to there. I visited Burlington Station. Thank you. There was a comment on stick versus non-combustible, non-combustible masonry. Village Code here requires non-combustible masonry. The multiple deliveries per day, I addressed that already. Oh, another thing on just the move-in, move-outs. The first year is really kind of hard because, you know, you turn the building over and a whole bunch of people move in. What, what happens after that is kind of interesting. So you have probably between 40 and 50% of people are turning over annually. And so between 60, 50 and 60% are staying there longer than a year. So if you do the math on that, you end up with about 40, at the top end, 47 units per year that are turning, and that averages for a month. So it ends up not being quite as grueling as it might sound on, on the surface. Now, they're very often on the first, or they're on a Saturday. So the Saturday ones tend to be a little bit easier to manage, and they're usually earlier in the day. But that's something that is important. On other projects, we typically work with the village to identify a way where we can either, if, if we have private parking on those three spots in the back, maybe we say, you know, Monday, Thursday, Saturday, from 8:00 to 12:00, that's when we can allow moving trucks. And so we know that it's gonna be hard to do a turn. We're gonna have to work with Greg and Jack and the other business owners and say, hey, this is the time when people are moving in and out. How does move-in, move-out happen? Snow removal, we talked about that. Restore, Stop &amp; Chat? I don't know. I, I like it. Frank, Mr. Trout made a comment that is, it's, it sounded like an opinion. It's a fact. Quality development begets quality development. When you start introducing quality development, what you see is more quality development. And when you see blight, what you see is continued blight. And so they are contagious. They can be independent of one another. I believe, I really, really believe that Westmont is on a tipping point of some really cool. I don't think we're gonna have a vacant storefront in 24 months. So, okay, Frank, I want to give you a hug. Greg, I want your business card. And then Renee, we, you already know we love you. And then, and then Mike Lynn, he's, he's actually brought up really great comments. He went to the Plan Commission meeting, so he's just right, unbiased, I think, right down the middle. The opportunity to add an additional crossing, it's been on the mayor's radar since he started participating in these meetings years ago. And then this is my final tongue-in-cheek comment, is use the proceeds from the land sale of the Mary Egan to maybe buy another municipal lot. He made a comment that there's vacancies nearby. Another comment, just real quick, on you did do a parking study. It was, I think, a very well-done study. It does identify that there's a lot of underutilized spaces. And there's some pretty cool systems where you could, there's apps, if you believe it, that where you can go and basically take private parking spaces and potentially make them available to the public. And I don't know. I, I could talk more about that, but I was asked to be brief. So, Chris, anything you'd like to add? Come on up.
There were just a couple of questions. I just want to make a blanket statement. We all agree this is a TOD project. TOD is walkable. These are new concepts for suburban towns. We bump into this all the time. Our office is in Chicago. We're at 700 North Carpenter Street. It's Milwaukee and Ogden. But we're very used to these things. Bottom line, in the city, it's, you know, you kind of hear this, and I'm not belittling any of this, but it's problems that people have been getting over in, in larger buildings and that. But, you know, someone stated their, their son, 32, hasn't bought a car. If you were in the city, or if any of you are in the city, you understand that a lot of these kids don't buy cars. No, you know, it's just Drew and I disagree on that, you know, I don't think anyone's gonna have a car unless they want to in 20 years, but, so that's, that's all I'm gonna say on that. But as far as Mike's comments on the, the elevation, again, you know, we did, I hear you. There is another development that we designed for Holiday in Portage. And we did a similar concept as far as trying to make the buildings look different. That kind of came from somewhere else. But you can see some of the materials here. This is what I'll point to. I have, you know, three colors of siding here that we're proposing for the building. Two different colors of limestone. You know, what we've done is, on some of their other projects, and we plan to do it on this one, is really, you know, and, and part of the issue with some of these buildings is they, they don't, they use the same brick. You know, they break it with a color of siding, and they think, oh, that, that looks different. We understand that that doesn't look right. You, you have to use different materials. They put different railings on the balconies. I mean, it, hats off to them. And they, they really, you know, carried it through. If any of you go down there, you can see it in real life. So, you know, we've tried to undulate the building. We've tried to do different things that stick out. You know, when you step back, there is different detailing. So we have really tried. Again, we, you know, we've gotten these comments from staff as well. So we have been trying to address these things over the last six months, and hopefully, everyone would see that in the final product.
So with that, that concludes our presentation. We want to thank everybody for your time. You've got a great group of people working on the Economic Development Commission and on the Plan Commission. I think village staff has done a really dynamite job of helping us improve the plan to the point that it is. I'm, I'm not saying it's perfect quite yet, but I'm starting to get pretty pumped about it. And, you know, we really look forward to this ride. And, and I think, I think Westmont's ready for it. We're ready for it, and, and I hope that you agree. So thank you very much. We very much appreciate your time.
Thank you. And I think between the residents and your presentation, you answered a lot of the concerns. But now's the opportunity for the board to ask any questions or comments?
Put it on the floor first?
I gotta put 11 on the floor.
Do the comments first.
I think comments first.
Just do them one at a time, okay? Well, why don't I start? And the first thing I want to mention is nothing to do with those folks at all, but it's something that has come up with almost every conversation that I've had with people around town. We need, as, with this project, if it does go forward, to talk about the traffic signal at Richmond. Because we are, we already are having cars going southbound, especially ones that are turning left off of Burlington or right off of Burlington going south. They're stopping on the train tracks because the light at Richmond is red, and the others are green, and it's backing up. And I don't know if that's something we can address at some point, or if it's something that has to go someplace else. But I think that's a concern that I have for the general area. And once these folks get built and get their, their residents in, it's not gonna get any better. So I think it should be addressed now. As I said, nothing to do with their project, but I think we need to address it to be sure that, that we keep the flow where it should be. And I think that's more a timing, Steve, than anything else. I'm just not sure how we, where we go with it.
Look into it.
It's all we can ask for because, you know. The other thing, and this is something, again, I know Dale brought up with me when we were talking, and I, I think this is a, I, I really think, too, this is something we talked about that I mentioned when we were looking at this, at economic development, is even if it was only a partial indentation where your entrance is on Cass, something so that taxi cab or somebody doesn't just stop and block traffic going south. Even if there was a couple of feet of indentation to get a car a little bit off of that because it's just one lane there. And, and again, I know you've got a zero setback, so we don't have a lot of room to play with, but I think it's something we have, we have to look and address just from keeping the traffic flowing off of that. And you mentioned it already, so I think you're already pondering, and I appreciate that. The other thing that I had, and this again is, is a construction question, but Mr. Carey raised it as his number-one question during construction, and I think it's a heck of a good question. Are you gonna contemplate closing? Are you going to contemplate closing any of Cass Avenue during construction, or asking to close Cass Avenue? And I would hope not, because we all, those of us who live here know already, we got, we have a little bit of a traffic flow problem, and that's a concern.
Now's the time you could answer that question.
Yeah.
Be trustee if they have one.
Sure. So when we go in for permit, it goes in, there's typically several iterations, we also need to supply a construction logistics plan. And if I come in and show village staff something that shows us closing Cass, they're going to puke on it. So I think what needs to happen is we have to develop a logistics plan that keeps us out of there. And then, you know, I'm going to really have to, we're going to, it's, I know I can't leave the microphone, but this alley back here, you know, maybe it's, if we've got to stop, if we need to stage deliveries, put the crane in where the retail parking goes, pick off a truck, maybe they have to back up the alley. Maybe the, maybe village requires that I have a flagger, so that it's safe when they're backing up. But these are things that, quite frankly, are really challenging for us to totally be prescriptive on right now, before we fully bake, how this, what materials is it going to be. We have concern with these masonry blocks between the floors and how we pick those and set them in place. They're very heavy, they need to go high up, they need to move a long way. So the questions on how this is going to get built are good, and I don't have all the answers, so I'm sorry. Fortunately, we have an architect who builds in Chicago all the time. And they were on the cover of Cranes, what's that project that you guys are doing? Maybe you don't want to talk about it, but. 700 Milwaukee, I mean, they're accustomed to helping us figure these kind of things out. And then our civil engineers, CivWorks, and they're pretty good at this, too. So what I would, what I would suggest, trustee Addington, is to not let me off the hook on this. And so when we come in and we're saying, here's how we're going to get it built, you know, you hold us to it. There's going to be times where we're taking, where Mr. May is calling me and saying, there's a problem. When I mentioned the 1,200 people that went, that have gone to work at Burlington Station, these are unique individuals. Some of them come on one or two days, a signage installer guy. For us to continually communicate the path for where the traffic goes, it's hard. And it's hard for us to force all of these workers to adhere to it. What they do is they ticket them, and then they don't make the mistake twice. So we actually work with the police department to ticket, and some of these are $750 tickets for the big trucks if they go the wrong way. So, it's not a perfect answer, I understand that. You know, success is messy, construction is messy, it's disruptive. But, you know, I don't know anything beautiful that I've ever seen in my life that was easy to build and didn't create a mess on the way. So, but we are, we try to not make a mess.
Can I have one other question, Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I'll let somebody else have the floor. For the parking stalls that you're looking at, both outside and inside, are they standard width and length?
Yes.
Yeah, so you're not shortening or?
All the parking spaces are standard, and they're to code. We do like to incorporate compact parking spaces. We don't always, we're not always successful at that, but in this particular case, we don't have any.
Okay.
All right, any other trustees' questions? Trustee Barker.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a few things. I mean, I really don't like the zero setback on Cass. I see that traffic is going to be an issue there, but it's one of those things where there's a give and take with this project. Unfortunately, I don't know if there's any solution to that. On behalf of the Environmental Improvement Committee, I would ask staff to pay close attention to the exterior lighting if this gets approved. You know, we want to light it. I heard in planning and zoning that they're very proud of their building, and it's a beautiful building. But then we don't want it to glow like a spaceship either. So they talked about directional lighting, and that can be done. So that's important to us. The other thing that's a concern to me is that, you know, it's a short walk for code enforcement from here to there. And I would make it a point to make sure that any greenery, because it's so minimal, is continually monitored and kept up. We've had issues in the past where that gets lost over time. And the greenery is going to be important to your residents, and it's also going to be important to the community. Anything that we can do to soften that and make it more appealing. And, you know, on the rendering, you see a tree that's, you know, 25 feet high. Is it going in at 25 feet? Well, probably not. It's going in at six or seven feet, and someday it'll be 25 feet. But, you know, it's important to the end product that there's more of that than not.
And that's a requirement of the development agreement, that they continuously maintain, repair, replace, land.
Right. We know it's in there, but we got to make sure that staff stays on that all the time, and that we don't lose sight of this, because it is prominent and it is critical to a nice project there. The other point is, and I'm sure Fire Department is going to take care of their end of this, and how they would fight fires and sprinklers and all of that. Larry Kaufman is there, and I'm sure he's looked at this many times over. And then finally, with, I'm comfortable with this board, if this was approved, that, you know, the issues that we have in a relationship that we would build in this, that we would be able to work out the situations with parking concerns, and traffic problems, and snow removal, and that kind of thing, because it is a relationship. Just like Larry Forsberg makes relationships with all the business community here, we would have to have that same thing in this project. And it's, we understand as a board, because it's, this isn't new to us, but we understand that there is, you know, pluses and minuses to this. It's not perfect, and they admit that. And we also see that, too, but it's something that is very important to our existing businesses, and the restaurants, and the shops that we have, and, you know, the future of the community in the CBD, not to mention the additional revenue that would be generated for our schools and library. So, and, you know, lastly, we all know that these projects don't come along very often. So thank you for considering us.
I know that, I asked manager May to look at the pedestrian crosswalk, because the one that we put in with the lights is probably not going to be in existence once you start construction. So he's going to look at a way to direct walking traffic, either to Richmond, going on the east side, but staff's going to look at that with you.
And we need to get old-fashioned policemen down there with a whistle, because that seems to work the best, and really, that's when it flowed the best down there, so.
Other comments?
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, just a few, Mayor. At first, I appreciate all the residents coming out. I spoke to quite a few of them that did speak tonight. So a lot of their questions that they shared with me were addressed, and I did the opportunity to speak with staff about quite a few of them, and I feel comfortable with a lot of them. So thanks for that. I think their involvement was good, it was all positive from that, those that did reach out. You know, they just had some valid points, but again, they all thought it was a pretty positive development. Let's see, what else? The only real question I have that really hasn't been answered, besides thanking the developers for coming, I've chatted with our friends in Downers Grove, and they've said nothing but good things about the process and the project so far, so that's good to hear, is if approved, and this was one question that no one asked, but I was asked four times, is when would shovel start? And that's a big if, but I just, I got to ask.
Is Mr. Sturgeon still here? Yeah, he's, he'd like to know that, too. So I don't know if I can back this up, but basically, we're, we need to complete property acquisition, due diligence, and zoning approvals. We have that targeted for fall, well, 2018, and we're in that process. You asked when the shovel would hit the ground, we have to go through, this bidding and permit review can be time-consuming, but, and then we've got to get financing. We've been financing these projects with local community banks, primarily through Wintrust, and they have a community, the local community banks east and west of us. And, but shovel goes in the ground. April 9th of 2019, so, you know, we're about seven, eight months away.
Very good, thank you.
Wasn't the eighth better for you, Steve?
Yeah. A bit flexible. I appreciate that. No, that was one of the most consistent questions. The mayor brought up another item, which was just a pedestrian crossing, but I'm glad our staff is working with them on it. And that's it. Again, thank you. I think it's an exciting project. If it was easy, everybody would do it. It's going to be a little bit of an inconvenience for the whole village and the surrounding communities, but I think it's well worth it in my mind. I think it's something that this village long needed, and it's, as a few people did say, it's going to be a transformation, not just for Westmont, but this whole area. So I really like it. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Nero.
I was on the Main Street Board 20-plus years ago, and everything we heard about when Westmont Main Street was in town was transit-oriented development. It's taken us 20-plus years to get to this point, and it's a vision that we've had for a really long time, and it's really nice to see things moving forward. And I'm hoping that this is going to spark a lot of more redevelopment in our village. I am a lifelong resident, and I can remember years ago when every street was filled with pedestrians walking around, every business in our downtown had viable business, and I'm hoping that we get back to that point soon, very, very soon. And I think this is going to be a push for us. So thank you.
Any additional? Trustee Bear.
Thank you. Thank you, guys, for your presentation. I probably varied, and I think I varied at the original EDC. I don't like the idea of cars on Cass Avenue and coming off there. I think it's a lawless zoo that we have going on between Richmond and the tracks now. It's been something that I've been in communication with manager May for, long before this was ever proposed to us. So we're aware of that situation, and we're keeping our eye on it, and we're doing, looking for answers to that. So again, one of the things that's been brought up with that Cass Avenue, and I really liked the idea of the Uber pickup zone that you had said designated, I think that if that's on Quincy, I think to these millennials, as a guy who's never used Uber, I think these millennials, that's a form of transportation. And if that was designated on Quincy, I think that we, you know, I think that's something we should really look to do to this. And I also liked how you had mentioned about possible designation times for the moving. I think that that, you know, alleviates a lot of what was brought up here tonight, and I think those are good plans if they can be worked out that way. I've followed not only your project in Downers, but the project at Main and Maple, which seems to be a larger unit, and probably as busy as a thoroughfare as we're dealing with here. I think we'd be foolish to say that Cass Avenue isn't going to be closed down at some point, or be redirected. I mean, Main and Maple, I think it was just a week ago, they had to close down Main to get the gas hooked up, or whatever it would be. So I don't think that that is realistic, to say that there would never be a closure of Cass. I think at some point, you know, whether it's a water main or something, we've seen that, even with the veterinarian clinic had to close down Cass for, to hook up the water main. The brewery is probably going to have to close down Cass to hook up that water main. And these are not the impact that this will have economically. So to your comment, success is messy, I'm going to use that. I like that, and I think that there is a growing pain with this. But overall, just fantastic. Your presentation has been wonderful, and the way that you've changed for the things that's been requested. I had a chance to talk to downtown Downers Grove, their development coordinator. The quote that she had is that you were wonderful to work with, okay? And she says, we see a lot of these, and that they were absolutely wonderful to work with. And we hope that that's the case here. So, thank you, and that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Any additional? Trustee Little, after trustee Little.
I just wanted to thank you, gentlemen, for your presentation, because you're passionate about your development, and as we all are passionate about Westmont, I think you've become that way, too. And I really appreciate your efforts and your design abilities, and your ability to keep all of us in mind when you develop something as beautiful as this. And we're really looking forward to it, so thank you.
Trustee Barker.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I just forgot a couple of things. First of all, thank you to the residents for coming out and speaking. Those three guys right there, we have a long history. Many years ago, we ran a thing called Long Range Planning. And so they've got some, a lot of knowledge in that group of men right there. And this gentleman over here, I don't know what his background is, but great points that were brought up. And then, as the board knows, I'd asked that, you know, we find a prominent place for the statue. And I'd also liked us to work in some way to see if we can get another green space, you know, I used to have a park background, as the mayor did, but another green space in the CBD area there to take place of what we're losing there in Mary Egan Park. So that would be important to the community. That is all, thank you.
I think with future development, that's going to be foremost, is some green space that people can sit, relax, and enjoy the food they're going to buy. It's a Stop and Chat ice cream. Any additional?
I just, I want to follow up with Bruce. I know those three gentlemen very well, too. I'm glad we could help Ray out today. And John and Dale both made great questions. I'm proud of you, proud to know you. And secondly, you guys blew me away at economic development, and it hasn't changed. You do beautiful work.
Thank you. Now, I do, one more comment for the people who spoke. Feel free, if there's other issues, I think Mike, is that, yeah, come out to another meeting if you've got comments about stuff. So we look for that. So we encourage you to, I think all the comments tonight were very positive, constructive, and I think knowing Drew and his history, they're going, Holiday's history, they're going to work at correcting them. So, no other comments? I've got to have 11 individual motions, and I'm going to read them one at a time. One, comprehensive plan amendment request to re-designate approximately .22 acres from parks slash open space to downtown mixed use.
Motion to approve, Nero. Second, Addington.
Motion made and second to approve. Roll call, please.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Motion passes. We don't need his.
Yeah, we got it.
Number two, zoning code variance request to increase the maximum allowed FAR in the B1 limited business district.
Motion to approve, Nero.
Second, Little.
Motion made and second. Roll call, please.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Motion passes. Number three, zoning code variance request to increase the maximum allowed height in the B1 limited business district.
Motion to approve, Little.
Second, Nero.
Motion made and second. Roll call, please.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Motion passes. Number four, zoning code variance request to allow for construction of a mixed-use development within a required front yard setback in the B1 limited business district.
Motion to approve, Little.
Second, Nero.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Little.
Yes.
Trustee Barker.
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo.
Yes.
Trustee Addington.
Yes.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Motion passes. Number five, zoning code variance request to allow for, for, allow for construction of a mixed-use development within a required side yard adjoining a street setback in the B1 limited business district.
Motion to approve, Nero.
Second, Barry.
Motion made and second. Roll call, please.
Trustee Nero.
Yes.
Trustee Barry.
Yes.
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Motion passes. Number six, zoning code variance request to allow for construction of a mixed-use development within a required side yard setback in the B1 limited business district.
Motion to approve, Little.
Second, Guzzo.
Motion made and second. Roll call, please.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Motion passes. Number seven, zoning code variance request to allow for construction of a mixed-use development within a required rear yard setback in the B1 limited business district.
Motion to approve, Nero.
Second, Barry.
Motion made and second. Roll call, please.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Motion passes. Number eight, zoning code variance request to reduce total required number of parking spaces for both the multifamily residential and commercial components in a mixed-use development.
Second, Guzzo.
Second, Nero.
Motion made and second. Roll call.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Motion passes. Number nine, preliminary plat of subdivision to consolidate lots to include a portion of the public alley to be vacated.
Motion to approve, Nero.
Second, Little.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Motion passes. Number 10, site and landscaping plan.
Motion to approve, Little.
Second, Nero.
Motion made and second. Roll call, please.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Motion passes. 11, development agreement.
Motion to approve, Nero.
Second, Barry.
And made and second. Roll call, please.
Did you give it to Barry?
I give it, give it to him. He's a mason guy.
Trustee Nero?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
The project has been approved, and we're looking forward to seeing that shovel in the ground and.
April 8th, right, Harold?
Yeah, April 8th.
He's got it written down, so.
Before we move, oh, you could leave. But, no. Before we move on to this, I failed to thank not only the residents who brought these questions, but our staff. You know, Joe has worked a lot of hours on this when he's got other big projects, his, at that department, and also planning and zoning. I mean, if it wasn't for the detailed planning and zoning goes through in their meetings, I think it was a three-hour, your project, at least. It makes our job a little easier. So, listening to the heat, oh, yeah.
Don't forget John.
So, again, thank everybody. I do not, any miscellaneous business. Seeing none, I do not have executive session after the meeting, so I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved, Addington.
Second, Little.
Motion been made and second to adjourn. I'd ask for roll call.
Trustee Addington?
Yes.
Trustee Barry?
Yes.
Trustee Little?
Yes.
Trustee Barker?
Yes.
Trustee Guzzo?
Yes.
Trustee Nero?
Yes. And I thank everybody for coming, and this meeting's adjourned.